Good evening, Matt.
He's coming down. He's coming downstairs now. Something happened to my computer the other day. And Matt, of course, fixed it because he's one of his many talents. All right, I know that the time is seven o'clock. I want to call the meeting to order. And before we begin, I would like to ask the town manager to read, please read the disclaimer.
Yes, just a reminder to everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Probably got the message spoken aloud to you when you joined in. But just ask that anybody whose name is not showing up, I'll probably either text you or send you a message so that we can accurately identify you. Please do state your name and your street. If you're a resident for the record, when you do speak, you can use the raise hand function to let me know that you do wish to make a comment. And if for whatever reason this meeting gets interrupted and we're no longer able to continue it, I will end the meeting and send out instructions to join a new meeting immediately afterwards.
Okay, thank you. And our first item is our public comment period. And if you wish to have, make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand or message to the town manager. Does anyone have a comment or a question?
Does not appear so at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as we're.
A second.
To a second. Thank you. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor. All the opposed, thank you. I think it was unanimous. The next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move.
I see cats on a bar and seconded by a council member. Heller, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. All those opposed. Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider a request for four variances on the front established building line for in addition to the existing house located at the property at forty eight oh six Grantham Avenue as requested by Lou Balladamos on behalf of Dudley folks. So. So now we will begin the hearing. Today is September eighth, twenty twenty one. This is a hearing before the town of Somerset Council for variance application twenty one oh eight two to consider four variances from the setback requirements of the Somerset Town Code for the property located at forty eight oh six Grantham Avenue, which will be enumerated by the town manager. The applicants Dudley folks and Jamie Miller are also represented by Lou Balladamos, a Balladamos architects who has submitted the application on the applicant's behalf. The hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak at one time, addressing the council when called upon and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have an opportunity, an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, staff, or other interested parties relevant to the application at hand. Then other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of the fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We will now begin the hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. All right, so I've included an introduction, but this request is for the following four variances for the proposed addition to the existing house located on the property at forty eight oh six Grantham Avenue, as the mayor said. The first is a seven point eight foot variance on the established building line for the proposed first floor addition. The second is a five point eight foot variance on the established building line for the proposed second floor addition. The third is a seven point eight foot variance on the established building line for the first story bay window. And the fourth is a nine point three foot variance on the established building line for the proposed overhang or eve. The applicants reached out to the town in July initially for information on a variance hearing. And the appropriate sections of the code were sent pertaining to variance applications and documents required for the hearing. The applicant informed the town that they did wish to hold a variance hearing despite not having a county permit at the time. Although the setbacks do conform with the county code, as the county does not have established building line requirements for additions only for new construction. Generally speaking, the applicants suggested that they would be overly burdened to first seek a county permit without knowing whether or not the variance would be granted first by the town of Somerset. So their request was to seek a variance with the materials that are provided to get guidance from the town on whether or not they could proceed as proposed before either necessarily amending their plans or submitting to the county. The town at that time determined that use of the word may rather than shall in the town code indicated that a preliminary variance request could be filed and that the variance could be fairly heard with the materials provided. A site plan and architectural drawings along with the completed application and neighbor signatures was provided to the town on July twenty second. After preliminary review, the town's engineer recommended that the variance for the second story addition be separated and added as a third variance. The applicant then updated their variance narrative in response to that feedback. At the August second hearing, as a reminder, the council heard a request for continuance argument from the east side neighbors to the property. Mr. Barry and Miss Laura, Laura Levine, who live at forty eight hundred Grantham Avenue. And Levine's at that time argued that they had not been properly notified of the proposed construction. Now, after a hearing on the matter, the council voted to continue, excuse me, to continue the hearing for a later date with a preference for an August hearing. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, no mutual agreeable date was found and the hearing was rescheduled for this evening. The applicants and the Levine's were notified of this rescheduling on Friday, August thirteenth. The applicant noted for the record that they were disappointed and that it did not seem right to them that an earlier date could not be accommodated. After further review, the town recommended that the applicant should seek a fourth variance for the overhang that is shown on the plan as dotted lines in front of the bay window in addition and which also appears on the elevation drawings. The applicant at the time asserted that the structure was the roof of a porch, which the town code indicates may encroach into a front setback nine feet. And so the variance narrative and drawings were updated to highlight those dimensions on August eighteen. In that time, the applicant also spoke with the town arborists regarding some holly bushes in the yard that are in the footprint of the proposed construction. It was determined that those bushes do not require a tree removal permit and no tree removal permits are being requested at this time. But depending on what is or is not approved by the council at the variance hearing, the applicant may request a tree removal permit when a building permit is sought. The following week, the town staff wrote neighbor notifications and delivered them to abutting property owners with information on the variances that were being sought and included a copy of the site plan. Seeking clarification on the proposed fourth variance, town staff met an additional time with the applicant on September second and determined that the overhang should not be interpreted as a front, as a, excuse me, as a porch roof as there's no raised structure that would render to porch. Instead, the setback requirements for eaves should apply. The applicant again updated the variance narrative and site plan labels a final time in response to staff feedback. And the updated documents were shared with the neighbors on Friday, September third. The Levine's have raised objections to the hearing and proposed variances and their objections are included in the council packet and are indicated as five point J forty eight oh six Grantham Levine objection one. The Levine's also requested that council members visit their home to observe their view of the property and to visualize how the proposed construction might affect their view. The town attorney responded that's, it's not the town's practice to have collective site visits. And the Levine's responded, which is also included for the town council. And the applicants were notified of these objections via email. The. I'm sorry. Bear with me. I apologize. The, excuse me. The council also received an objection letter dated September fourth, two thousand and twenty one from the Levine's and a letter of support from the neighbors across the street from the property on Surrey Street. With that, I am happy to turn it over to our town's engineering consultant Doug Lowmeyer for any additional information. I also want to make one final note for the council that I've included a site plan with notes that were that illustrate the, the four variances that are being sought by the applicant to better visualize the specific requests.
This is Doug Lowmeyer, the engineering consultant. Matt covered all of my points in my report. Except I would like to add that if the council approves the variance, I recommend that they receive a certified wall check to make sure that the setbacks of the additions comply with the council's opinion on the approval. And if that all answers any questions that the council has.
Okay, does that conclude your report, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now the, now the applicant will have the opportunity to present the application.
Thank you. Thank you all. Jamie and I bought forty eight.
Remember to identify yourself because this is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you all. Dudley folks, Ballstone Avenue. It's my wife, Jamie Miller.
Thank you.
Jamie and I bought forty eight oh six Grantham over a year ago. Since then, we have worked painstakingly to develop and refine this remodel design. We believe it carries its dual intentions. One, to respect and reflect the character of the neighborhood and of Grantham Avenue. And two, through modernization, to preserve the house for the next generation. We hope all of this comes through tonight. As was suggested in the August council meeting, we met with the Levine's but decided nevertheless to let the application stand as it is and move forward from the decision. From the decision, yeah. From the council. With that, I defer to our architect and our design consultant Lou Balladamos.
Thanks, Dudley. Thank you, Matt, Doug, Tolbert, and Ron for your work on the application as well. And I do, we will provide, if this, if this gets approved and moves forward, we will provide the certified wall check that Doug recommends in his report. Matt, am I going to be able to share images?
Yes, you should be, you should be allowed to share. Yeah.
Does that work?
Yes.
First thing I'd like to note is that the, while there has been some back and forth with staff since our original application in July, the form, size, height, all the physical features of the proposal have not changed since July twenty second. What we've gone back and forth on is terminology and classification of, you know, what is, what's to be included in the variance, how to separate the variances and make, make the application as clear as possible and adding dimensions to clarify that. But again, the physical form of the proposal has not changed. This is the existing house at forty six oh eight Grantham. Split level on the west side. North facing towards Grantham. The design proposal intends to demo the carport and the sunroom that's kind of seen in the shadow here under the carport and to build an addition, as Matt and Doug said, to forward of the established building lines, but not forward of the existing house will be even with the existing house running the width to the setback line of ten feet on the west side. The first story will be approximately the height of the existing carport, maybe a foot, foot and a half taller than that. And then there will be a second story above that. But we wanted to contrary to earlier proposals that I had made, where we took down the west wing. Jamie and Dudley pushed back on that and thinking that that was not, that was detrimental to the streetscape on Grantham. They wanted to keep that and maintain the scale of the house, albeit with a new second story that is, will be set back from the first floor. This is a plan of the, all the houses on the south side of Grantham for the entire block, starting with forty six hundred and running all the way over to Greystone on the other side. So you've got two corner lots and five lots in between. The determination of the EBL is in the town's figuring per the town code. You throw out the, any corner lots and you average the other houses that are within three hundred feet of your property, not including your property. So for Dudley and Jamie's new house, that works out to thirty three point seven feet and includes one, two, three, four houses going west. Does not include either of the corner lots in determining that, that average. They end up with the largest EBL on the street, given that. Or this is, this is taken from a professional survey that we had done, certified survey per the town requirements for establishing the EBL. There are four other houses on the house, on the street, excuse me, that currently sit forward of the EBL, including the west wing of Jamie and Dudley's new house, including forty six hundred, which is twelve feet forward of the EBL, EBL for that property. And then we get over here where we're six feet forward and five point six feet forward on, on the end. So there are existing variances on, on the lot. Moving on to the existing site plan. This dash line in front, the red dash line is the EBL. The footprint of the house is here. This is the car. Um, the footprint of the house is here, this is the carport, this is that sunroom that we're going to demo. Um, this is the west wing that's projecting forward the same seven point eight feet from the uh, EBL. This is the required or existing setback on this side of eight feet. The, both the town, the county require a total of eighteen feet, so we've got eight feet here and then we'll be. Uh, billing to a ten foot setback on this side. The rear setback is twenty feet. So that is the official buildable area. You know, enlarge this a little bit. In making that decision to maintain the streetscape on this side. We end up with a very limited buildable area in, in the remaining space. Um, we also need to include a garage in that. So once you take that away and you take this space, you take this space away, you're only left with this amount of buildable area. Um, the problem with split levels, of course, is that you end up, that, you know, they, they start with a minimal sized living area. Main, main living spaces, I'm talking, yeah, the split level, you've got, you know, a den downstairs and bedroom upstairs, but the. Main living space of the house is very small. And given the scale of the investment that you have to make in these houses now, that, that's not viable going, going forward. Um, it really becomes necessary to, to build forward of that, of that line in order to make this a. A reasonable house and to meet, you know, Jamie Dudley's requirements for, you know, for their needs. Not only does their property have the largest EBL, it's also the shallowest lot on the block. You know, which is, is plain to see there, so they're kind of doubly encumbered in that sense. Um, giving them the smallest footprint to build on. This is the proposed site plan, uh, which. We've got the, should be in your packet, has the four variances identified. That's the footprint, the gray shaded areas, the footprint of the existing house that's going to remain. It's the seven point eight feet forward of the EBL, this dash line being the EBL. The new first floor comes out to match that here, again, seven point eight feet. There's a bay window uh, that we want to add to enhance the living room on this side of the plan. Bay windows are typically allowed forward of a setback line to a dimension of three feet by ten feet. Uh, and one story, and you can do up to two bay windows on a, on a facade. Um, we're just asking for the one here and it's uh, variance is ten point, ten point eight feet from the EBL. But once you uh, subtract out the allowable three feet projection, again, it's a seven point eight foot variance request. Um, the second story is this dash line here. It's setback seven and a half feet from the east side lot line, meaning a total of seventeen and a half feet. From the lot line on the east and it's setback two feet from the building on the, on the front. So it's only got a five point eight foot variance request. We are putting a roof line uh, over the bay window and carrying it across the front of the house, which we originally termed a front porch. But um, based on Ron and Matt and Doug's feedback, um, decided that should be called a uh, eve. Uh, projection instead and eve is typically allowed to project um. Two point, two and a half feet, so that is a uh. Yeah. Eleven point eight foot, I'm sorry, eleven point eight minus two point five is nine point three foot uh, projection. Um, couple other things on the site plan. Um, we will be adding a rain garden here, which can handle approximately almost a thousand square feet of roof area. So we net out with less uh. Drainage, offsite drainage than currently exists uh, on the property. Think you should also note that when we add on the front of the house in this zone. We are not obstructing anybody else's. Street view, right? It's tucked in behind this garage projection and their existing projection. It's a form that just sits right in here, it's not coming out and instructing the neighbors view this way. In that sense, we think it's, you know, it, it will not be objectionable on the street. These tables, just clarify, they're on that plan, previous plan. Um, the lot area is seventy six hundred plus square feet. Uh, the existing structure occupies two thousand forty four. We're adding four hundred and fifty eight square feet of footprint. So even though we're requesting the variances, we still end up well within the maximum allowable lot coverage for the property of thirty five percent. And as I said, the rain garden um, has a capacity of handling uh, almost a thousand square feet of roof area, which is a vast improvement over the. Uh, current situation. This is an aerial that kind of shows the massing relative to adjacent properties. You'll see the second story here setback from the front. And setback that's seven and a half feet from the side, seventeen feet from the lot line and then effectively twenty five feet. From the adjacent property on that side. Again, the second story, holding it back on the rear reduces the impact to the neighbor on, on Surrey as well. This is a floor plan, this is so you can see what we're proposing. Um, the shaded walls are existing walls, so the existing house is sitting in here. We are expanding the west wing rearward, um, five feet um, to give a bigger family room, we've got a guest room down here. Living dining kitchen uh, on the main floor, garage with some extra storage space on the side. Powder room, walk-in closet and a little mud space and a walk, walk-through pantry to, uh, to serve the kitchen. Not a crazy house, this is a, a simple proposal. Upstairs, we've got three children's bedrooms in this wing. A study for Jamie away from the kids up here and a master suite. Um, again, this is a small footprint relative to the first floor. Uh, and, you know, modest in terms of plenty of other houses that are going on in, in town. Uh, this is a front elevation uh, with a height of twenty six and a half feet to the ridge. This is that horizontal line that sort of mimics the existing carport roof that's there. Again, it's a little bit higher than the carport roof because we're trying to raise the ceiling on the first floor. Um, and then the second story pushed back from, from there. Um, this is the existing wing of the house, which we're just replacing the windows and redoing siding on, on that one. That's the bay window that's projecting forward and that, that's the eve that's uh. You know, out the uh, four feet from the wall of the, of the addition. This is the east elevation, there's a new second story setback from the first floor. Um, that's the bay window projection and that's the eve right there. Rear elevation where we've added on to the back of the west wing. Uh, this is slider into the dining room, kitchen window, pantry. Now you see again this seven and a half foot setback from the wall below. Um, again, trying to maintain the scale that, that exists now, the one story scale and back, this is well behind this, you know, the. The elevation kind of makes it look more massive than it'll actually feel from, from the rear. West elevation where we're, all we're doing is adding five feet and then this is the second story addition beyond. Uh, we plan to include solar panels on uh, the roof of the existing house and the roof of the new second floor. This is an elevation of the house, you know, showing what we're, our proposal in, in the background. And the dash line is what the code allows in terms of height. We could go to a ridge of thirty five feet uh, and an eve of twenty five feet. So you can see that what we're proposing is very modest. Um, you know, given what you've seen around town, this is certainly not objectionable. And we feel that limits the impact on all the neighbors. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, is um, to, to um. The, the Kaplan folks, do you have anything else you wanted to add in your presentation? The Miller, I'm sorry, the Miller folks.
Um, no, thanks. Thanks Lou. Don't have anything to add.
You'll, you'll have an opportunity uh, later, as you know, to rebut anything you would like. Um, now we will have, the council has the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant staff or other interested parties. And we will start with council president Circa.
I want to say thank you for the presentation. Any question about the bay window? My, my understanding is this, it is only entitled to that variance if it only sticks out three feet, but appears to stick out. Five feet on one side, just because of the way the construction is set up. I was wondering if our uh, town engineer could address whether that's an issue or not. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Thank you Doug, please. So, so the, my understanding is that a bay window is only allowed to uh, project. Um, a- as requested, if it's less than ten feet, ten feet or less in length and three feet or less in depth. But on one side, uh, in this drawing, it appears to be five feet in depth. Is that an issue?
It's, it's a projection beyond the EBL, it's not beyond the existing house, so it's in relation to the EBL, not to the house.
Oh.
But there are lots of three feet beyond the EBL.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Um, yeah, the, the, the code provides that the bay window can be no wider than ten feet. Doesn't dictate how deep it can be other than the projection into the. EBL or into the front setback can't be more than three feet, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ron. I, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council member Barr.
Yep, a couple of questions. Um, you have shown and emphasized that the second floor uh, is uh. Seven foot six inches inside of the building line of first floor and seventeen, over seventeen feet from the property edge or from the. Neighbor's house. Was that a recent change in your design or is that always been there?
That, that's been there since we initially applied. That has not changed.
Okay, thank you. Um, second question is to do with the four foot eaves. Why? That's, that's really the question. Why are they four feet and not two foot five? Or, you know, what, what is driving the extra length of those eaves?
Uh, two main issues, three. Um, one is the bay window is three feet. So we want to come a little bit beyond that and then carry it all the way across evenly. Two is four feet kind of gives you enough to stand, you know, for somebody who's coming to the door to stand out of the rain. Get their keys or ring the bell and wait for somebody to answer the door, two and a half feet's a little tight. Three is if you do a wood stained door, four feet is the minimum overhang that they will warranty the door for.
Okay, you, I mean, you could have a, an essence of mini porch over the door though, without having a four foot eve all the way through, right?
You could, but again, we were trying to mimic the original house and maintain the scale of the street. You know, this has that, that, you know, eve line, roof line, shadow line kind of going across. And we want to repeat that, which we think really helps scale down the overall facade. You know, a two and a half foot shadow line isn't going to do the same thing. And even at, at two and a half feet with us building out to the front of the lot, we'd still be requesting. You know, a variance for the two and a half feet, that would still be, whether it's four feet or two and a half on the front, it's, it's a variance in this case.
All right, um. Okay, I'll stop the questions here, thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member Hallard, do you have any questions? You're muted, you're muted, council member Hallard.
Sorry, Lou, I wanted to know about the, the, the porch that's off the second floor bedroom. Can we go up to that and look at that together? Um.
The deck or balcony on this side?
I'm sorry, the deck, yes, because that seems to be, if I'm correct, really a. Something that's at issue with the Levine's. Um, can you tell us about that and how that's going to project and? How it affects the house next door? Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Originally, we weren't, we didn't have a deck here, but Dudley and Jamie felt that that was a lot of wasted roof area. You know, we, we made the decision to hold this wall back to respect the light and air. I mean, we didn't need the space, right? We, you know, this accomplished what we needed, so we ended the house here, which had the benefit. Of leaving plenty of light and air between us and the neighbor. Um, but that's a lot of wasted roof area. And it just seemed natural to put a deck, you know, a sun deck for them out here. Whether that's a privacy intrusion, you know, that, that's not what it's for. It's for them to sit outside away from the kids and, you know, enjoy the, the air and the breeze cutting through there, it's, that, that's what that's for.
But do you think that is a privacy intrusion?
No, no.
No, it won't, you know, sitting up on that deck isn't going to look right into, into the Levine's side of the house or. Kind of take away any of their light and things like that, because I think that is a question.
I, I don't think so. If you look at the aerial, um. You know, you look at, at that separation from the second story. You know, compared to, you know, which is only for that, that twenty feet, twenty one feet. You look at that tightness there, you look at that compression, that compression, that, this is certainly in, in keeping with that.
Okay, and it won't take away the light from their side of the house or?
Uh, you, you will be able to see this through the window, I can't deny that, but I'm sure plenty of you have. You know, windows on the side of your house where you can see another house, that's not a adverse impact.
But is that part of, that's part of a variance request, isn't it?
No.
No? Okay.
No, that is within the setback.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilor Kumar.
Thank you, Jeffrey, and thank you to the town staff and to the Miller folks team. For a detailed presentation. I don't have any questions on the specific variance request, I think they're pretty straightforward. I had a question about the holly trees. I'm not sure when would be the right time to bring that up and maybe Lou, you can help answer that. In the documents we received, it's been marked that those trees will be removed. Is the intention to remove them or is the, is that an open question right now? Is it necessary to remove them uh, to move forward with the current design?
Uh, one, they are not trees, according to your town.
Definition.
Arborist, they are bushes, they are.
Bushes, okay, all right.
Um, but we did show them because we thought they were trees.
They're sizable, sizable bushes for sure.
Um, this one, the smaller one is in the footprint of the new house, so that one has to go. And the larger one is, ends up in the path of the walkway that we need to get around this side of the house.
Okay, okay, so there is a question mark.
Yeah, but we've proposed two new trees back here. Um, we, we think this is a good spot because of the glazing we're doing on this, you know, the south elevation, we've got new glazing here and this will give us some. Shading and cooling on, on that wall.
Yeah, I, I bring it out, bring it up because of the concerns that have been brought forward by the Levine's. And I'm just wondering to what extent we can maintain some. And I'm just wondering to what extent we can maintain some tree presence or, you know.
The green is free. The green is free to plant on their property any trees that they want.
They have the land space there to be able to create green screen.
Feet on that side, you know. But I'm not saying that that Dudley and Jamie won't rethink that and come back. But these, according to Matt and Doug and Tolbert.
That's fine.
Not part of the application. The whole tree thing is not part of the application right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. No questions on the variance pieces. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rovac.
Um, my question, so I know you had said that it doesn't really fall into the Montgomery County guidelines because it's an addition. If you were to tear this house down and rebuild it as you planned, would it pass the Montgomery County guidelines?
No, then if we tore the whole house down and did a new house, we'd be back here at this line, at the EBL.
Okay, so that's like the main thing there because you want to take the front of the house to match that little L that comes out.
Yes, yeah, we're we're aligning with the existing west wing of that.
And can you build more backwards?
Not much. And not without impacting the usable space back here. But, you know, here's the gray shaded area is the existing house. We are building back in here, but there's only that much to build back behind that.
Because the like, because a lot is slanted?
Because a lot is shallow and you've got a twenty-foot setback. So this diagonal line is the setback line from the rear lot line. That's as far back as we could go.
And the deck that you were talking about, like, does the deck part of the house need a variance or is that covered within the just regular um, plan?
It is. It is not part of the variance application. No, the only only variances are the front addition, the second-story addition, the bay window, and the eve over the front on the first floor.
Okay, and so with the Montgomery guideline, Montgomery County guidelines, so, um, you know, we start all from scratch again. Um, would they have been allowed to do that front L part that is sticking out? Or is that just because it was grandfathered in based on whenever the house was built?
I'm sorry, you're saying if if the original, if you tried to build, if you tried to build this house now?
Yeah.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to build this forward of the EBL now.
Okay, and as far as the other houses on the street, is that the furthest that sticks out?
No, this one is the farthest that sticks out, forty-six hundred. It's within twenty-one feet of the front lot line versus twenty-five and a half here, thirty-one, thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight, twenty-six and a half, and twenty-six.
Okay.
So the closest one is the corner.
Okay. Um, okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Council. We will now open the floor for public comments. We ask that those making public comments, please be respectful of the council's time and keep all testimony and evidence relevant to the application at hand and not be repetitive. For the record, I note that the council has received email testimony from Laura and Barry Levine, including their suggestion that they were not provided timely notice of variance application, their request for the council to visit their home, documentation of their previously obtained variance, and photos taken from their home in opposition to the variance application, and the objection letter, which is dated September fourth, twenty-twenty-one. I also note for the record that the council has received a letter of support from the residents across the street on Surrey Street. So now, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone indicated they wish to testify or ask questions?
Uh, yes, the Levine's have.
Okay, thank you.
I know that they wish to speak.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, everyone. Thanks so much for taking the time. We appreciate council members.
Remember to tell us your, put your address on the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm Laura, and this is Barry, and we live at forty-eight hundred Grand.
Thank you so much.
We we wanted to address the sub, some of the substantive arguments, but before I do that, I do want to put on the record a procedural objection that we haven't quite elaborated on in in our emails. The code requires that all of the documents required to be filed with a building permit must be filed with a variance application. So the code specifically says um, in section twelve fourteen, twelve, one, twelve, fourteen, the applicants shall submit with the waiver application the same documents required to accompany a building perfect permit application as provided in one, twelve, six. And then one, twelve, six lists the documents that shall be submitted with a variance application. They must be. And the very first one is A, one, twelve, six, A, a copy of the Montgomery County Building Permit granted by Montgomery County for the identical work for which the applicant seeks a permit from the town of Somerset. Now, Mr. Challenger recited that the the folks has called and said, you know, we don't, we don't want to do it that way. We are feeling overly burdened and we want to get quote unquote, get guidance from the town. And we want to get, as Mr. Challenger said, we want to get, we want to submit a preliminary variance request. So we don't want to to do this. And Mr. Challenger said there's some discussion about the word may and the word shall in a separate provision. But this provision is absolutely clear. These documents, it is absolutely mandatory that these documents be submitted for a variance request. And we submit to you that there's a very good reason for that because what's happening here, they've gone out of order. And so they've essentially, they're submitting a building permit request. They're essentially submitting that, and the town's been working with them to perfect it and get it exactly right. But they haven't submitted all the documents. And yet, if you grant them a variance and then they go to the county and get there, and and by the way, I do think they need to get one variance from the county for that eve. So everyone is saying.
Okay, Ms. Levine, let me have you stop there because I think you're asking some very important questions. And let's ask the town attorney and Matt to respond to that first one. And then also the question about the Montgomery County variance.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear from Mr. Bolt, but I didn't really get to finish my explanation of why I think it's so critically important that all the.
Well, I understand, but why don't we let them answer, then maybe you might, maybe you, you know, I want to give you enough time to to get all these questions answered, but let's get that question answered before you continue to elaborate on it. Okay? I think it'll make it easier for people to understand. So, Mr. Town Attorney or Mr. Town Manager, can you please address this first very important question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. After receiving the request from the applicants and reviewing the language of the code and the purposes of the code, it was my opinion that the town council could allow the hearing to proceed. It is not uncommon in other jurisdictions that I represent, for example, to allow contract purchasers to seek variances as a condition of closing. Some folks might want to know whether they can do certain construction before they purchase property. Also, with respect to the cost that has to be incurred to submit full plans, it is helpful to applicants to know whether certain things will be allowed before going through the burden and expense for full plans. I thought the key for the council would be is whether a due process hearing could fairly proceed based on what was submitted. And there, really, what the applicants need to show for the benefit of the neighbors and the benefit of the council is what is the impact of the variance? And, you know, typically, what you need there is a site plan showing dimensions, elevation drawings, showing what the construction is going to look like. And with that information, I think the the council and neighbors and interested parties can fairly participate in the hearing and judge the impact of the proposed variance. And the, you know, the the council has discretion to apply the code and should apply the code in in a manner that that makes sense. And again, I don't think an applicant needs, for the purposes of a variance hearing, to produce everything that must be produced with respect to a building permit application.
And and that is information that the council will take into account when they are deliberating tonight.
Okay.
So so furthermore, let's get your question answered regarding the Montgomery County need for a very, can you answer that, Mr. Town Attorney?
So I'm not sure I understood that question, that the question is if the the house were to be torn down and rebuilt, would a county variance be required? I I think as.
What was your, do you want to restate your question, Ms. Levine?
My understanding is that the eve exceeds the twenty-five-foot building restriction line. And so in Somerset, anyway, you need the, even if you didn't have an EBL, you would need a variance because it exceeds. And so you we're understanding in the county, there's no EBL, but there is a twenty-five-foot building restriction line, and the eve exceeds it. So I think you need the county there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I understand the question. So the county, as I recall, and I can check online right now, has the same exception for eaves. The county also allows eaves to project two and a half feet. And so the.
But this one, they would not be on that. This one projects beyond the two and a half feet. Because this one projects to whatever it is, twenty, no, it predicts to twenty-one point something.
Twenty-one point five. Okay, yes, yeah, you're you're right. So a county variance would be required if the county agrees that this is an eve. If the county treats it like a porch, a porch can project nine feet into a front setback. I don't know how the county is is treating.
Ms. Levine, you are free to ask the applicant questions or or the applicant's representative.
Okay, I I I just wanted to continue to say why we feel it was it was important for the, I understand the town attorney to say that they felt it wasn't. But I want to give an example of why I thought, I think it's critical that the all the documents should have been required as 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 is not only required by the code, but by your mayor Slavin, by your form that they have to fill out. It says specifically, please ensure that you submit a complete application. Incomplete applications will not be reviewed. Refer to the permit instructions sheets for details on how to apply for your particular permits. And it very specifically says that all of these documents are needed. Now, I'll just give one example of why I think this is a problem. If you all grant this variance, they'll go to the county and they'll get, and maybe they'll get the permit there. And then they're going to come back and they're supposed to have a bit, a bona fide building permit hearing in front of this council. How can that be a meaningful hearing? Once you've granted the variance, you're essentially saying to them, you can build this building. We're giving you the permission to build it and to build it in this place. And that, so when do we have a meaningful opportunity, for example, to talk about the trees? Now, you know, they said that Mr. Feather came out and said, these two trees will have to be removed if this is built. And I don't understand anyone telling me that these trees that are way up high above our house and have many trunks and that are beautiful, those are not trees. Oh, come on. And Mr. Feather called them trees, and they say that they're trees on the site plan, but they don't, they have not submitted their tree removal plan, which they are required to submit with this variance application. And so what will happen is they will go to the county and then they'll come back. And if you say, hey, wait a minute, you can't build this building because you can't kill those beautiful trees. They're saying, what do you mean? You granted us this variance. You told us we could build this building here. And we will have no reasonable opportunity to object to the killing of those trees. That's just one example. The same.
So let's let's get, let's see.
Let me just give the other examples. No stormwater damage plan, which sediment control and stormwater, stormwater drainage plan required by one, twelve, six, B. Same thing there. There is no, there's no marking of the distance of the AC units from the lot line, which is required by one, twelve, six, B, six. Same thing there. We're very concerned about where they want to put the AC units. The the tree removal plan must be included. The county and permit must be included. They say that must be included a recent boundary survey with a margin of error of one inch or less. As we've indicated in the documents we've submitted, there is no boundary survey here with a margin of error of one inch or less because the town itself, with your signature, Mayor Slavin, said our garage was at twenty-two point eight. And their document, their surveyor said twenty point nine. That's not a margin of error of one inch. So there's something wrong with the boundary survey. Now, we will have no opportunity, once you've granted this variance, to 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 deal with any of these things that are missing from this permit application. And I will also add that on Mayor Slavin's form, it asks the applicant to check the box indicating which permit they're applying for. They checked off building permit. There was a place for a variance permit. It's called waiver, which is the language you used to use. They didn't check that. They checked off building permit because that's what they think they're getting here. But if they're getting, essentially getting a building permit, if you grant this variance, then they need to submit all the forms. They can't do it without the paperwork that's required under the code.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, can you answer those questions?
Sure. So with respect to being able to review tree removals, locations of air conditioning units and other elements of the building permit application, the council will hold a hearing on the building permit application, and there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on those aspects of the plan and whether or not they conform to the substantive requirements of the code. I think it would be important for the council to decide tonight, you know, is there information missing that makes it impossible to judge the impact of the variance? And, you know, if well, I'll I'll leave it at that for the council to cite that question. With respect to stormwater drainage as well, you know, that that's an issue that the town currently does not regulate. There is a ordinance on the agenda for this evening where the town's going to possibly introduce an ordinance to start addressing stormwater drainage, but it's, you know, not not something that's substantively addressed in the code now, other than the the council wants to see that the county requirements have been satisfied. With respect to the the boundary survey and perhaps the the applicant, Mr. Baldemus, could explain where these measurements came from?
Why doesn't he do that? Why? Let's have him do that now.
Uh, yeah, we had a professional survey done by Snyder Associates, and those dimensions are straight from from his survey, which was also submitted. It is a certified boundary survey. Uh, and I've seen nothing that would cast doubt on those dimensions.
And do you know what margin of error is reflected on that survey, Mr. Baldemus?
On his, a plus or minus a foot. And that that is what the requirement is, not plus or minus an inch. I believe his was actually within an inch.
Is that survey in the record, Mr. Challenger?
I believe that was included in the packet.
Be within four feet of a building, Mr. Keen.
So have I answered the questions, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ms. Levine, do you have any other questions or further comments?
Yes, I do have further comments. I am. Let's see, many comments. I think that the code is about, the margin of error is one inch or less. And I will only say that we have documented by by the town and by a surveyor that our car, the edge of our corner, our garage is at twenty-two point eight. So twenty point nine is just in question. That's all. And the I I'm concerned about that. I'm very concerned about that because all the numbers depend on those surveyors' numbers being correct. And if they're not correct, I mean, it was the town itself that determined where our house came. I sent in the paper. So our house is not at twenty point nine. It's at twenty-two point eight. That's what the town, that's what the town determined six years ago. The I guess on on this issue.
I mean, I I gotta say, I gotta resent doubt being cast on professional documents that have been submitted based on hearsay.
Okay, you'll have a chance to rebut that.
Thank you.
I mean, it's not hearsay. It's a document that we submitted. I mean, it's not hearsay. It's a document that we submitted, so it's not hearsay. It's a documentary evidence.
It's not hearsay.
The we do also, before I get to substantive matters, and we do also have a objection about the fourth variance. There's been a discussion that about the fact that there's a dotted line that indicated what the that where this eve was, the porch was, but that dotted line was not labeled. And if, to the extent there was a label in the site plan that went to the neighbors, it was an arrow into that area of the dotted line. And Mr. Challenger could pull it up if if you put in, it said new driveway. So it was, and there was not the word porch, not the word eve, nowhere to be found. So the neighbors looking at the dotted line would only see the arrow going into it above into the dotted line saying new driveway. Nobody realized, none of the neighbors realized what that was.
Would you, would you like the town manager to, can you pull that up, Mr. Town Manager?
Yep, bear with me one moment while I pull up the document.
I mean, we say that one of the things Mr. Challenger said is the only thing that changes labels, but I mean, labels are critical. The neighbors need to know what they're looking at. And if it says, if that it's a porch or an eve or something that's jutting out four feet, the neighbors need to know that that's what it is. Nowhere did it say that. It said new driveway. So I mean, it's it's not, it's you can't just say it's just labels. Labels are critical.
It changed the code section on which the which the analysis was done. It's a different code section for an eve than it is for a porch than it is for a driveway. So it's very material.
Yeah, it's okay. I can keep on talking while we're waiting for that. I mean, Mr. Challenger, you know, what we're looking for is the site plan that went to the neighbors, the version.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I apologize for my delay.
Problem. The, I would say to Mr. Baldemus that we have no, we are not suggesting that anyone purposefully is misrepresenting boundary lines, but only that there is a clear conflict here between two certified, two certified surveyors' numbers, and they're two feet apart. And the one that's signed by the town is the one that shows our our corner of our garage to be at twenty-two point eight, not at twenty point nine.
That was done by Larry.
And I also would suggest, I don't really know, when you look down at that aerial and those, there's thick white lines surrounding the homes. I don't know where that comes from, but someone's drawing that in, and I'm not sure that those lines are right. So anyway, the the deck, does the deck, everyone is saying we didn't need a variance for the deck. Why not? The variance is going, the second, it's on the second story and it's going well, way across the EBL.
So who are you asking that question to?
I guess it's a rhetorical question.
May I ask a question of Mr. Baldemus about the deck?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Baldemus, you you agree, I I am sure, that the the council must have judged the impact of the variance on 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 us, correct?
Barry, not agreeing to anything, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Not agreeing to anything. Go ahead, please.
Well, you you either answer the question or you don't. Do you agree that that the the council?
That's for the council to answer, not for me to answer.
Do you agree that is the rule?
Okay.
That's for the council to answer and the town's attorney to answer, not for me.
You made no mention of the deck in your in your presentation.
The building code applies to structures which have a roof by definition. The deck does not have a roof.
Do you agree that the that that the deck needs a variance as it goes for, as part of the second floor jutting out toward the street?
As I said, the the deck is not a structure according to the definition of a structure, which is what is subject to the setback.
I think, I guess the comment we'd like to make with respect to this is the second story needs a nearly six-foot variance, and the deck is attached to that twenty-foot wide second.
The deck doesn't have a roof, so it's not subject to the setback.
It is attached. You won't, if you don't have the variance for the second story, you don't have a deck. You can't put a
No, we could have a deck. We could have a deck over the whole first story if we wanted to.
Is it is it yours, is it your position that the deck is not part of the building?
That's what, by definition, in the town code. Ron, you want to look that up?
That you you, is it your, you maintain that the deck is not part of the building?
So the the roof of and the the deck, it's part of the addition, the first story addition. So the first story addition needs the variance, but we don't, we don't treat the roof as a separate element, for example, that needs
Okay, so the deck needs an eight-foot variance.
Not from the side, from the, from the front.
From the front. It needs an eight-foot variance to put that deck on because it's on the top of the first floor. So it needs an eight-foot variance to put it on.
It does not. Ron, please look at the definition of what is subject to
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is the the first floor addition requires the front variance of seven point eight feet.
Right, that's not what they're asking.
And they're, you know, they're, they're treating, as I understand, the deck that's on top of that addition as a separate building element. But the town is treating that as part of the addition for purposes of the setback.
That's right. So that it need, just like that addition needs an eight-foot variance, so does the top of that addition because it's attached, it's a part of that addition at the top of it. So I just wanted to be clear on that because several council members have asked, does that deck need a variance? Of course it does. It's up top of the first floor, which needs the variance, right?
I disagree.
Okay, you'll have
Can't build that deck without the first floor.
Okay, so Ms. Levine, and please continue with your testimony or ask questions.
Okay. Okay, I want to turn now to the, let's see, if you just could bear with me for one second. There was a slide that Mr. Baldemus showed that we had never seen before. I think it was number three. He had, he was showing, trying to show that the folkses can't build a reasonable house in their setbacks. And he had the trapezoidal, that was a slide we had never seen before. So I just wanted to ask about that. I'm gonna go, and and it's important because we don't buy it that they can't build a very reasonable house, one that satisfies their requirements without adversely and unduly impacting on us and the street we would, we submit. And I I want to just quickly go over some of the the standards, which I'm sure Mr. Boat will confirm are correct. The standard for a variance is that they must be granted exercise sparingly and granted only under exceptional circumstances. So you all have to feel that somehow this is exceptional. They can't build, they just, they they can't build anything reasonable in in within the boundaries. And even then, honestly, if they couldn't, if, I mean, they knew what they were buying. If they couldn't build the house they wanted in that, in the setbacks that are governed by law, then they should have bought a different lot. But they certainly can build a very reasonable house. They don't need to have all these extra things. They could build a very lovely, reasonable house that doesn't adversely impact on us and that doesn't affect this and doesn't require this variance. That's the standard. It must be exercised sparingly and only under exceptional circumstances. That's the jurisprudence in virtually every jurisdiction about variances. And the purpose of it is because the law, the zoning law, people need to count on it. So when we did our addition and we put in our trapezoidal windows, we had a right to count on the zoning law, which is, which states that the neighbor can't build a house that in, that unduly and adversely impairs our enjoyment of our house. And and they, everyone else in the neighborhood and new buyers have a right to 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 count on the zoning laws being enforced for what they are. That's why the exceptions have to be very, very narrow. This this variance they're seeking, nine feet for the, in front, it's unprecedented for a front variance in in this town. It's huge. It's huge. We've talked to so many people who have said, we thought variances are for like a few inches here or there because you can't quite get that corner right, or you need, you know, it's just unbelievable to us that they're asking for this huge a variance coming forward. Now, Mr. Baldemus has sometimes said to us, said to us, well, what's the problem? You go that far forward. We go that far forward. First of all, we built our garage in nineteen seventies, I think seventy-three or seventy-four. There was no EBL. So this notion that we're twelve feet out of the EBL, as as the document we submitted showed, our variance was two point two. That's our variance, not twelve, two point two feet. And it was for essentially a flat-roofed garage because we had flooding problems. When we rebuilt it, we put a slight slope on it so that we wouldn't have those flooding problems. So they're not talking about a flat-roofed garage. We wouldn't be objecting at all. We wouldn't be here today if they were asking, can we put in a flat-roofed garage that goes as far forward as yours does? We wouldn't be objecting. It's the twenty-six point, twenty-six foot, five-inch second story jutting into that variance that we object to. It will totally change the look of the street. And
And it will peer down into our, into our room. Look at the elevation. Our windows are the trapezoid windows are less than nine feet tall from the bottom. Their their first floor is going to be more like eleven, twelve feet. And then on top of that, they have the deck. They have a door from the bedroom onto the deck. And while on the deck, they will look down through those trapezoid windows into the core of our living space.
I think Ms. Heller asked the question, you know, will this impact on their privacy? And Mr. Baldemus said, no, but
But that's preposterous.
Preposterous. They have a deck where they can sit and sun. He said it's a sun deck. They can sit there in the sun and just look right down into our main living space all day and all night. That's what they can do.
Day and night.
Directly in, directly in, because they will be up, the floor of their deck will be higher than the lowest point of that window. So even if they're sitting, certainly if they're standing, they're looking right in and they'll see it, you know.
Okay, Mr. and Ms. Levine, I I think you made your point on that. But I I would like to have the town attorney to confirm your interpretation of the grounds for a variance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just going back to whether the the deck, roof deck needs a variance. And I I believe what Mr. Baldemus was was about to point out is that a deck can project nine feet into a front setback. So it is somewhat difficult to determine where does the roof deck end and where does the eve begin for purposes of calculating the setback. Matt, would you put up my notes that I, where I highlighted the site plan?
Yes.
And what the the site plan we asked for?
I I also have that. I sent you a message. I was able to pull that up, so so can do so.
So, you know, it's probably reasonable to conclude that the portion of the roof that is the deck would be the portion that's enclosed by the fence. You can't see that here, but what this does show, and these are my notes, you know, highlighted in yellow around the the perimeter adjacent to the Levine property is what we're considering the eve. The first floor addition that's hatched in blue. You know, that that portion only extends, what, seven point eight feet beyond the EBL. So if you consider that the deck, then there there's no front setback variance needed for the deck for what's hatched in, you know, blue.
We don't see blue.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's kind of hard, hard to see the color, but I don't know if you can see my that this area is is actually blue.
Yeah, just just the lines, the hatching is blue there. See that, that addition and that roof deck on top of that addition, you know, extends seven point eight feet in front of the EBL, and a deck is allowed to project nine feet. So no variance would be needed for the deck from the front.
Well, my only point was the deck is attached to the structure. The deck is the top. It's the roof of that of that floor which needs the variance. So if they come together, they both, I mean, if you don't get the variance for that floor, you can't put the deck there. You can't float a deck in thin air. You have to have it on top of the of the first story which needs the variance. That's all. It's coming, it's it's not disputable.
Right. The definition of building includes the deck, one twelve dash two. Uh, building includes any permanent structure, whether a primary accessory structure having one or more stories and a roof designed primarily for the shelter, support, the enclosure of persons or property of any kind and including all parts of the structure. I repeat that, including all parts of the structure, including but not limited to projections and impertinent structures. The deck is is the roof and it's part of this, it's part of the building and it requires a variance.
It's the roof of the first.
Okay, Mr. and Ms. Levine, do you have any further questions or testimony?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I had to get to the question of the legal standard.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, generally speaking, the Regional District Act requires municipalities to provide a waiver process to address special cases where building requirements may present hardship. Jurisdictions set different standards with respect to how hardship is measured. Some jurisdictions say hardship, some say practical difficulties. The town of Somerset has a somewhat liberal standard. So you know, the Montgomery County Rotwine case that I believe the Leavens are citing, you know, applies the standard with respect to the Montgomery County Code, which, you know, under most reported Maryland decisions talks about the the general need to have a two-step analysis. One, you know, you determine whether there's something unusual about the property. And two, does that unusual condition create a hardship or a practical difficulty? The town of Somerset Code works a little bit differently. A an applicant can prove that to show entitlement to a variance, but then also can prove somewhat of a lesser standard. And that is that the variance would not block sightlines and and such. Let me, let me look at the exact language. The proposed new building construction would not unduly interfere with light and air between residents or other structures, would not be unduly incompatible with the scale, massing and character of the town or nearby residents or other structures, and would otherwise not unduly adversely affect the use, enjoyment or value of nearby properties. In making such finding, the council may consider such factors as size and location of proposed new building construction, size and location of existing and potential buildings and other structures on nearby lots, and topography and existing or planned vegetation of the lot in which proposed new building construction will be located and of any nearby lots. Should the council be requested to consider planned vegetation, the applicant for the variance shall submit a landscape plan with a variance application. So the town codes, you know, somewhat different compared to other jurisdictions. You don't necessarily need to prove that there's an unusual condition or practical difficulty or hardship. You you can prove entitlement, you know, based on what I just read. So, you know, from that standpoint, the Montgomery County Rotwine case is helpful, but, you know, not dispositive and distinguishable because we have different standards than those applied by Montgomery County.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to address that if I could. If you're suggesting that the Somerset Code should be read to me that that as long as the county, the five members of this council determine that those standards that you read, we think it just doesn't unduly adversely affect the use, the value, the enjoyment. We think it doesn't unduly affect mass and character and scale. We think it doesn't unduly affect light and air. Sorry, Leavens, we just think it's fine. They, you're suggesting that that alone is enough without them needing to demonstrate a need, a reason for their need for this variance. We think that's an improper interpretation, and we also think that is not that does not reflect the legislative intent of this code. The Somerset Town Council actually wanted to, that's why they have an EBL and the county doesn't. They want to protect the streetscapes. They want to protect the neighbors. They were trying to be more restrictive. They have always, that's always what the Somerset Town, 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 Count, Town government has wanted to do, be more protective of our streets and our trees and our neighbors. So to to read this code to mean that there doesn't have to be any demonstrated need for this variance, I think is to read it improperly, not the way it was intended to be read. And it, and I don't believe it will be upheld, that form of reading of it, precisely for the reason I've stated at the start, which is that it it emasculates the zoning laws. That means anyone can come in and say, we don't have to give a need. We don't have to have a hardship. We don't need to go to practical necessity or any of these other things because we're just gonna say it's, it's fine. There's not, it doesn't impact on the light and air there.
Mr. and Mrs. Levine, in the interest of time, you you have every right to disagree with that interpretation, but that was his answer. So do you have any other further testimony or questions at this time?
Yes, we do. We we want to point out that Mr. Baldemus and the folks obviously felt that it was important to to demonstrate need because they they carry on about it in their documents. They say, our unique lot location, shape and size They say our unique lot locations shape and size demand an urgent solution. They say that they they have that there's this exaggerated EBL, which is unfair. They they say we have exception, you know, we have this unusual shallowness, which is unfair. So they obviously.
Okay, I I think we I think we know that already. But do you have any further comments or questions?
Yes, I do. I wanted to address their argument that the EBL is exaggerated, that it's a I wanted to address their argument on that in case that any of the council may members are influenced by that. We would say to you that there's nothing exaggerated about the EBL. The as I say, the EBL is a formula that the town of Somerset decided it wanted to keep because it and the EBL is critical when it comes to the front of the property because that's what protects our streetscapes. And and one of the things that Mr. Folks said to Barry early on was that he moved wanted to move to Grantham because he loved how far setback the houses were from the street on Grantham. It's so lovely that way. And we need to protect those front setbacks more, you know, really especially. This is this is going to be one that's going to come forward and higher than any other house on the street. And it's going to dramatically change the streets streetscape. And we just totally disagree with the argument.
Ms. Ms. And Mr. Levine, I think that now you are going over testimony and information you've already submitted. Do you have any additional testimony or questions?
Yeah, so I would like to add that we we walked out today and we noticed that the the folks' houses in the highest point of the street. Ours is down from theirs and the next house on the other side is down from there. So when they go high, they're going higher than anyone else, right? So they their houses at a high point on the street and you all will see that if you come. And they tried to show in this document all about how all these other houses, all these other houses have these, you know, the fact is that not a single one of these other houses has anything like the the mass and size and scale of what they're planning to do. They're all very low and toward the end of the block, especially low because it's a hill. But even our house is lower than theirs. So they're really at the peak of this street, which you'll see if you come by. And so them going high is even, you know, is even worse. I would make say that the the town code on on the very issue that 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 Mr. Bolt said that is what they have to show. They have to show that the variance.
I I think that's already been explained.
No, no, I wanted to add on it that I wanted to add on it that they have to present evidence. It's not enough for them just to say, we think it doesn't. They have to present evidence. They haven't presented any evidence to show. They haven't presented a single thing that shows that shows what's what we're going to see from our window and what how they're.
I I think I think you you made that clear.
Well, that I've made it clear. I don't that was one thing I wrote in the margin because it wasn't in my written document. So you asked me, Mr. Mayor Slaven, to say things that I haven't submitted in writing. I want to say I hope that everyone's read what we submitted in writing, but I made additional comments because I didn't they weren't in the writing and I'm trying now to to get them on the record.
Okay.
You could bear with me for a minute. Let's see. So I mean, this this form, this document that Mr. Baldemus presented is very misleading because the EBL.
I think you made that clear.
I have a separate point about it. The EBL is not allowed to include when you do an EBL analysis, you're not by code, you're not allowed to include any house that got a variance that has a variance. And that's precisely because the town of Somerset didn't want the EBL to be distorted if there was any house in the three hundred feet that had gotten a variance. That house is then excluded. So trying to show somehow that that all these EBLs are different, it's that they got a variance. He tries, he's trying to show that we got a twelve foot variance or that lot number six got a six foot variance from an EBL. First of all, it's not true. Those houses were built in the 50s when there was no EBL and they didn't need it and they didn't need a variance at all. So it's first of all, it's not true, but it's also.
I don't, yeah, I Mr. Baldemus can probably correct that. I don't think he was saying that those houses got a variance. I think he was saying they're nonconforming to those measurements. In other words, those houses as built are currently nonconforming to the extent of the measurements shown on the the plan.
You mean to say if they were built today, they would need?
It wouldn't be it wouldn't be built.
Correct.
I don't I mean, I don't even know if that's true. But the main thing, the main thing about those houses is they're not three dimensional. So they don't show the fact that those houses are very modest in height.
So Mr. And Mrs. Levine, I think that you have adequately presented your arguments. I think you've done an outstanding job with your documentation and all of the emails and letters that you've written. And and I think, in my opinion, if the council does fully understand where you're coming from, but let me do run through the council to see if they have any further questions of you. Council President Circo, do you have any further questions of the Levine's?
And no, thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Vaughn. You're you're on mute.
No questions for.
Okay, thank you. Council Member Kumar. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Katsur Heller, excuse me.
Good, right past me. It's okay.
Do you have any further questions?
I I'd like to make this a quick question, Lauren Berry. If I may ask, and I don't know if this is out of line, anybody stop me if I'm out of line, is your main objection? There are side variants that's creeping over to you? And that is that really your main objection here?
I would say I would say that, I mean, I don't know about me, we object a lot, but obviously the fact of the height right so close to us and the impact on the light and the air and critically on our privacy and on, I mean, we hope those pictures show that we we completely blocking the window, this structure and going and, you know, yeah, I
That answers it. Thank you.
I understand, actually, the the folkses understand that that's our major objection, how close and high this house is to us. And we're hoping that you'll deny the variance and then they will they will then be willing to compromise with us on that because there is a compromise that we could make. They could get rid of that study. They could move that that second story back, that second story back further from us so that they couldn't see in quite so readily. They could also do away with that deck.
Okay, that was a quick question. That was a quick question. Thank you. I got it. I appreciate the answer.
You should know that that deck is three feet long and and our windows nineteen feet of window and they're looking straight down on the hole.
I saw that in your picture.
I think you made that clear. Council Member Kumar.
I don't have any questions. Just wanted to thank them both for for the detailed testimony, both in writing, the photographs and just now.
Thank you. Council Member Revak.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So now I think there is, I think the town manager has indicated there's another member of the public that wishes to comment or ask questions.
Yes, Mr. Sandeep Kapoor has indicated that he wished to make a comment or question.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, Matt. I want to.
Tell us your street, sir.
Oh, sorry. I thought it shows up in on my name.
We need it for the audio.
Okay. My name is Sandeep Kapoor and with my wife, Mamta Murthy, we live on fifty four twelve Sari Street.
Thank you, sir.
Which I have learned not to trust the maps, but I believe we have about a seventy or seventy, somewhere between seventy to eighty feet boundary. The rear ends of our houses, Dudley's and Jamie's house and our house have that common boundary wall. So I'm not a lawyer by profession and I thought I was going to intervene in the spirit of sort of community interaction and I wanted to make three short points. What I think is short sometimes goes on. So Jeffrey, do cut me short if you think I'm going on for too long. The first point had to do with something that happens not in terms of the what gets constructed, but the process of construction itself. I wanted to make the point that while the construction is happening, there is an incredible amount of noise, construction noise. I know it's not a legal point, but I'm just talking in terms of. And what we have yet not come to understand is that for the last eighteen months or so, many of us have been working from home. We are fortunate enough to be able to work from home. But it does mean that depending on the kind of interaction, what we, you know, what we're doing, I'm a university professor, so I end up teaching. I teach remotely. There is a incredible burden. And while the town has been mindful of all sorts of pollution and all sorts of environmental effects, I'm struck by the fact that eighteen months into this, we still believe that daytime is a time when a lot of noise can be is permissible. And I can understand the arguments each way. You know, there are problems with people need to get their houses fixed. That will entail a certain amount of noise. And I know the town is making its effort to cut down on the level of noise pollution in terms of what kind of, you know, yard equipment can be used. My second point has to do with when you have houses that are so close to each other. I think at our closest, if you look at the current structure of the house behind us and ours, we are probably fifty feet apart. I have not measured it, so I could be wrong by. But in terms of elevations, we are perhaps the house on we are probably twenty feet, maybe a little bit more below us, you know, the same grade, the grade at which you enter. And given that elevation, two things come into place. One is the fact that any amount of construction, any amount of extension can have lots of impact on, you know, the vegetation cover in terms of drainage. So I was going to intervene in this meeting and say, express the hope that whatever is done is sympathetic to the need that there should be no adverse effect in terms of drainage. We all are susceptible to flooding if you are living on the lower end of some slope and also in terms of vegetation, which feeds into the issue of privacy. I.
Did you want to ask those questions to the applicant?
Well, I will do that. I've had a few conversations with Dudley and now, you know, I've had, I perfectly understand what they're trying to do. But just to let push push this point further, in terms of, I can understand why in order to accommodate a larger family, they would like to add an extra level. And I can certainly understand an extra level will have some impact. The room where I'm sitting about twenty feet below this, you know, the houses, as I said, the base levels about twenty feet apart. It's clear that an additional story is going to intrude upon the privacy. In fact, the room that I'm sitting in right now would be in full view. So I was actually quite struck by the architect, Mr. Baldemus's remark that there would be no impact on privacy. In fact, I've had perfectly friendly conversations on with Dudley on this issue, but I was quite struck both by the architect's attitude, the dismissive manner in which he gave those answers and his belief that this is going to have no impact at all. If you believe that constructing another story, which is going to look down about thirty feet into a neighbor's house is going to have no impact on privacy, I don't think we have any eternal right to privacy. It's something that we would like, but I'm really struck. And I'm just that particular intervention from the architect in question has certainly altered my view on how I approve, you know, how I see this entire project going through. Sorry, I didn't want to go go on that long. Jeffrey, you suggested that I can put this question to someone, anyone who wants to intervene.
Did you want to ask a question to the applicant regarding the impact on stormwater?
Yes, Dudley and Jamie, if you're there, did you have any views on what you were going to do on the vegetation separating these two properties? Are there any trees that are going to be cut down? Is there going to be any reduction in that? And have we done any kind of analysis of what it might do to stormwater?
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the applicant, can the applicant answer that, please?
I'll turn the stormwater question over to Lou. But if I'm right, I think that between our property and yours, Sandeep and hello, I don't think we plan to cut that line of trees that are there. No, no, right?
Yeah.
And probably plan, Warren will certainly be open to discussions.
Right, okay. You know, I'm sure this is the very, very much the spirit in which we wanted to do things. And just at the moment, I would worry about turning over the question on stormwater purely to Lou. Lou might remember some years ago, he had done a architectural plan for some modifications that we wanted to do in in our house. And Lou might recall that. And so he knows what the view looks like from this end and what the gradient is from the receiving end of the water flow. We did not actually go through with whatever Lou had drawn up with us on that occasion. But it's something that we would really be grateful if it could be looked into. It's something that we, you know, the most recent storm.
I think that the Miller folks were asking Lou to answer your question, how they're going to address.
I will also, before Lou goes, I'll just add, we have absolutely zero interest in looking into anyone's house as much as you don't want us looking in. And so we're really interested in mutually figuring out different, all the kinds of mitigation strategies that we have with our neighbors here who are feet away from us. And, you know, yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, though. We appreciate it and we get it. We completely get it.
Does Lou want to address the?
Sure. Excuse me. Hi, Sandeep. Yeah, we I am definitely sensitive to your concerns. I'm sensitive to Levine's concerns. If I'm dismissive, it's if I sound dismissive, it's because I feel like I've I've gone to lengths. Jamie and Dudley and I have gone to lengths to be sensitive to everybody and we're still getting this kind of flack. That's that's what's frustrating. On a spe, you know, I know what is, you know, when I first walked around the back of Jamie Dudley's new house, I was like, oh, there's Murthy Kapoor's house right there. I know exactly what it's like from down there. I think if I was to draw a section through that back wall, which I think is closer to six or eight feet in height, grade differential between the two properties. And then you've got one story, two stories existing in the back on the one side. And then you've got another step up to another part of the property and then we're adding a story. That story is well back of the lot line. It's well back of the rear wall of the existing house. I think if we were to draw a section, you know, from your backyard up through there that you would see that there's, it's really going to be hard for them to see down into your house. I'm pretty confident of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And I can address the stormwater as well.
I I would beg to differ in the sense that this is something that would easily be done through visualization.
Okay, thank you. Were you going to address stormwater?
Yeah, I was just going to put the screen up again. I don't know if Sandeep was online when we talked about that earlier. You know, the only two trees slash bushes that we're losing are these two. Everything that's along the property line, along that retaining wall that exists there is going to stay Sunday. And in terms of stormwater management, right now, we've got, you know, downspouts spilling water all over the property. We're going to control most of that and take it to this new rain garden on the front of the house. So the offsite drainage situation will be improved by this development.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any, are there any further questions?
Jeffrey, no, I'm happy to stop at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, did any other member of the public wish to speak?
Mayor, I have a question about those trees. I have a question that Mr. Baldemus says that he's going to have to take down. Those trees, which he said are not trees.
Okay, who are you addressing your question to?
To Mr. Baldemus.
Okay.
Now, Demus, do you agree that those trees are over four and a half feet high? You're on mute. Do you agree they're over four and a half feet high?
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Do you?
I don't, I was told they aren't trees. The town arborist says they are not trees. They, of course, they're four and a half feet high. It's a rhetorical question.
And do you agree at four and a half feet, they're more than four inches wide?
That's why we indicated them on the drawing. We showed them as trees. We submitted them that way and the town decided they were not trees and took them off the application.
Mr. Feather said they were trees.
The tree removal is not part of this variance.
The problem is that once you grant the variance, then you.
That's the problem.
Once you grant the variance, that's.
Okay.
Granted the building.
You've already, you've already, you have already stated that. So did you have a further question of?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Baldemus. Do you agree that questions about the trees and questions about views into privacy are amount to flack?
I, given the lengths that we've gone to, they feel that way. Yeah, I'm sorry, but they do feel like that. Yeah, I feel like we've gone to great lengths and I feel like.
I want to respectfully, yes, that's the kind of sensitivity that this project has come to to teach.
So.
I disagree.
Mayor, can I?
I wanted to make one more comment if I could. I wanted to say to the council that we have spoken informally with a number of neighbors. Many neighbors are hesitant to speak out because they're aware that the folks are going to be their neighbors and they don't want to. And some of them know them already and are friendly with them already. But we have spoken with at least three who are very unhappy with this and unhappy generally with the development in the town and the places specifically where houses go up so high that people can look down into the other house. One neighbor in particular, very close to us complained, she said she couldn't make it to the. One neighbor in particular, very close to us, complained, she said she couldn't make it to the hearing when she wanted to object. But she thinks it's outrageous that the council let these people build a house and they look, they can't ever open their bedroom blind. She says when they sit on the back patio, their privacy is totally invaded and they feel like the council-
Major point.
Just want you to know that there's a lot of sentiment in this town.
I understand. You've made your point. Do you have any further-
Slavin, you, I feel that you cut me off so often. It feels terrible.
We want a full hearing. We don't want it truncated.
I feel that you snap and cut me off all the time.
You have made, you, you have made your point. You, do you have any further information you want to convey?
I would like to convey that we have some additional points we'd like to add to the record for appeal. So can we please have permission to submit those in writing in the days ahead?
Mr. Town Attorney, can you address that request?
It would be best just to have the, the points raised now, Mr. Mayor, so that the applicant can respond, you know, rather than keeping the record open for that purpose.
Do you have further new information, Mr. and Mrs. Levine?
I don't know if you call it new information. We have comments we'd like to be ma- made on the record.
I mean, this-
So I can be, I, you can, let me, let me just finish mine.
Okay, go ahead.
We think that the stair, we don't know if there's going to really be a bona fide building permit, uh, hearing that's going to have any merit to it.
That, that, that is-
Okay, so I will object. I want to object now to the-
That was answered by the town attorney.
Well, I mean, I, I didn't, I don't understand the answer because the building permit can't be denied.
That was answered by the town attorney. Do you have any further?
Yes, I want to object to the outdoor stairway because it can't have a stairway. The stairway can only be in the rear, in the rear setback.
What's a cool thing?
I want to object to, um, I feel-
I made all those objections clear.
I hadn't made that one. I never had made that one, Mayor. That was brand new.
There, there's a specific code section that says outdoor stairways-
You have further permit. Okay. I think that we have given you adequate time to comment on this application. So do you have anything?
Okay, well, I, I mean, you're saying to us, we can't, we can't complete the record in, in writing, so we have to do it now. You have to let us. We have additional comments to make. We feel, we feel, and I want to state it for the record, that there is a bias here.
You have made that clear.
No, we have not said that. We have said the word. I did not say the word bias. I did not say it yet. I feel that Mr. Ballademas has a relationship with the town. He has a relationship with all of you. The town has been helping the folks. They've been working with the folks. We've called now and nobody has returned our calls. So we feel that there's a bias here and we feel that the relationship that Mr. Ballademas has with the town is not fair. It's not-
You made that clear. You've already made that clear.
I had not said that before.
Yet you made that in an earlier hearing.
We also, we also would request that the bios of the council members be made, please, a, a matter of record in this, in this hearing, so that we could have the bios of the council members, so that we could have that in the record.
I have one final point. This application is predicated on choices. It's not predicated on need. There's no extenuating circumstance. There's no exceptional difficulty. It's just choices, decisions they made. They decided they want to walk in closet. They decided they want to walk in-
Mrs. Levine, I think you've already made these points.
Well, that, well, the point out, the, the ultimate point here is that they have to justify a variance.
You have made-
A burden of proof. They have offered no evidence. They just-
I thank you for your testimony.
Their lay opinion.
Okay, thank you.
You have to let me speak, Mr. Mayor. You can't just say no.
Your way you talk to us sounds like you're not, you're against us. It sounds like you're against us.
Okay.
It's a level playing field. You don't speak that way to them.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we will, we will now have, have the applicant has the opportunity to present a rebuttal testimony. That is testimony that has not been introduced previously and that directly responds to the public comments presented. Do the applicants have any rebuttal?
Jamie, you want me to go ahead?
Uh, yeah, um, maybe, maybe abbreviated, um, whatever you think of the key points.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. First, with, with due respect to Levine, it's really offensive to hear them in their testimony and in their nine September fourth letter, try and dictate what's right for my clients in terms of the rooms, the spaces they want, that, that kind of stuff. That, you know, you as a council don't really want to get into that decision making. That's up to them and they're based on their personal and financial situation. Your decision should be based on the form and massing of the proposal, not what Jamie and Dudley have decided they, they need. Some of the points that were bounced around during the, during the neighbor testimony. Councilmember Heller, you mentioned a, uh, asked the Levine's if, if the side variance was an impact on them. There's no variance requested on the side of the house. The variances are all being requested on, on the front of the property. So I just wanted to be clear about that. With regard to the exaggerated EBL that we stated, it's exaggerated in the sense that the town excludes the, uh, two corner lots, which are actually closer than anything else and would have averaged Jamie and Dudley's EBL, would have made Jamie and Dudley's EBL if those were allowed to be included as they are in the count. That, that's what makes that exaggerated. Regarding the deck, I just want to point, uh, Ron to the building code, which, you know, if you look at what in one, one, two, fourteen C, what the setback requirements are, setback requirements apply to a building, quote, a building shall be setback from lot lines at least as follows. Then when you go to the definition of building, building include, as, as Barry was reading, includes a permanent structure, primary accessory, having one or more stories and a roof. The deck does not have a roof. The outside stairway on the side of the property does not have a roof. They are therefore not subject to the setback requirement. Regarding the question of whether the front overhang-
The deck is a roof.
Yeah. Matt, can you move please, thank you? Based on my experience, regarding the question about whether the front, uh, eve would be subject to the setback requirement in the county, based on my experience, it would fall in a definition of porch that I already, uh, applied for here, but town thought it would be better to call it eve. I am certain that would be allowed as, as the, uh, projection in, in the county regs. Regarding the claim that we didn't submit a tree removal plan, we did in fact submit one, uh, and we showed the replacement trees and the town decided that, uh, those did not belong on the application. Regarding the claim that Jamie and Dudley knew what they were buying and should have, uh, you know, bought somewhere else, um, you know, you didn't, by the same logic, the Levine's, I mean, they, they had a reliance. They, Jamie Dudley knew there was a variance process available for, uh, constrained conditions like this. I'm just going to go back to some more images that I want to share here as well, farther above. This clarifies what the situation will be relative to Levine's. Um, again, we're twenty-five feet away from their house and in the end, half a story above their ridge. There's plenty of light and air. Yes, they will see, uh, a house through their window, through their side window. Many of you have that condition. That is to be expected in a small town. The Levine's have been fortunate, Barry, for fifty years to not have a house in view anywhere. The same space that has the clear store windows on the side also has all these clear stories on the front. They have plenty of blazing on the, on the rear of the rooms that, that they're talking about. It is not an adverse, uh, impact. Right now, they enjoy you know, three hundred and sixty degrees of open perimeter. They sit on a corner lot. They are elevated above Surrey and above the Murthy Kabor's on the back. And we are only impacting twenty of those three hundred and sixty degrees with this second story addition. I don't know how you call that an adverse impact. They have plenty of daylight and view available. And even this, yes, you can see it in the window, but there's light in there between the houses. They're still going to get daylight in their, in their side window. You look at, at their situation compared to everybody else on the block and they are in prime position and this is not that adverse an impact. I should point out, you know, this is that wall, sidewall. I don't have a picture of the rear of Sunday's house, but, um, it feels like the, uh, Levine's are holding Jamie and Dudley to a much higher standard than they've imposed on the Murthy Kabor's here with this, you know, twelve, fourteen foot wall blocking their light. And lastly, I just want to point out that there are plenty of privacy options for windows of that type. You know, the Levine's claim aside. So I think the privacy issue is not, is not warranted. And like Jamie said, then they're not, the point of the deck is not to look into Levine's. It's to enjoy being, being outside. So I think that, uh, final point in Levine's letter, um, that they sent, they claimed that even if this variance is denied and we come back with a compliant solution, that they are going to fight that and be against that. So I don't, I don't know how you give any weight to their objections here. If they're going to object to anything we propose that has a second story, having a window with a view on the side does not give you ownership over your neighbor's property. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact.
Did we have several rebuttal, please? May, may we have several rebuttal, please?
No, the public portion of the hearing is-
I'm not, you're not going to allow me to address the points that Mr.?
No, you don't. That's not our, that's not our process. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of the law and may vote on the application. So now I turn it over to the council. And perhaps the town attorney can frame the decision and the decision-making process.
Sure. So were there specific questions or would you like Mr. Mayor just to go over the, the variance criteria?
Why don't you do that again? Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the code provides that the council can grant a variance if good cause has been shown on either of the following grounds. So ground one or ground A, the proposed new building construction would not unduly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures, would not be unduly incompatible with the scale, massing and character of the town or of nearby residences or other structures, and would otherwise not unduly adversely affect the use, enjoyment or value of nearby properties. In making such finding, the council may consider such factors as size and location of proposed new building construction, size and location of existing and potential buildings and other structures on nearby lots, and topography and existing or planned vegetation of the lot on which the proposed new building construction will be located and of any nearby lots. The council will be requested to consider planned vegetation. Well, um, the applicant for the variance shall submit a landscape plan with the variance application. But vegetation's not an issue here. Alternative finding two or B, the strict and literal application of this section would result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties to the owner of the lot on which the proposed new building construction is to be located due to exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, topographical conditions or other extraordinary situations or conditions peculiar to a specific parcel of property. The following do not constitute practical difficulty for the purposes of this section. The existence of nearby structures or buildings which do not comply with this section, the granting of a variance on other lots, or any condition resulting from the conduct of the applicant or the applicant's predecessors in title. In addition to making either of those findings, A or B, the council must also conclude that the variance is for the minimum reasonably necessary to avoid the above conditions or situations. And if a variance is granted, the council can impose conditions it deems necessary in the public interest and necessary to effectuate the purposes of this section. In other words, conditions that may lessen the impact of the variance.
Okay, so counsel, counsel, you have, um, received a lot of information on this application and you have been read the law. So as I always do, I'd like to ask if anyone is prepared to make a motion.
Um, I was thinking we needed to discuss this a little bit first before we tried to make a motion. Um, but if, if a fellow council member is prepared to make a motion, uh, please do so.
Yeah, I agree actually that we should probably discuss it first, um, before we, we make motions.
And- Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Well, I was just hoping to, uh, frame the discussion. I think it's, this is obviously an, an emotional issue for individuals involved and is, is an issue of concern to residents throughout the town because it does affect the character of the town and other building plans, potentially in the future for the town. And so, you know, obviously we need to treat this seriously and I'm pleased to have given this as much time as we have. I think the, the first condition I think to look at is what are we being asked to do here and do we have the authority to proceed? So we're being asked to look at variances for conceived building permit application. But we are not looking at that building permit application and we are not looking at the semi-control plan for that building application. We are not looking at the, the tree management plan for that building application. We're just looking at the variances. And and I think we can look at those variances independently, one by one. And at least for myself, I find the, uh, the, the prospects or the or whatever for varies between the, the variances requested. So I don't know if anybody has, has any thoughts on this. I, I just think we could talk about the different variances. But if anybody has questions on whether or not we can have this type of a focused look, maybe that should be the first thing we talk about.
I, I would also like to request a four votes, one in each on of the different variances because I don't feel the same way about all four variances actually. And the other point is we are only considering the variances at this hearing. It's something that Ron said earlier. Um, there is a separate building permit hearing that happens after the, the applicants have received their permit from the county. And that's when we consider everything, um, at that point in time. But as I said, now it is only these four variances that we are considering.
Steve, uh, could you explain why you want to consider them individually? And before you answer that, I just wanted to, uh, ask for the guidance from our legal counsel, say that I visited the property earlier today. I was, went for a walk and I wanted to see it for myself. And it was very clear that that, you know, despite the specific nature of the variances from the EBL, that ultimately the form and the mass wouldn't be as substantial than what is already there. So I, I, I don't know if others had had a chance to visit and get a sense of how much further out it would come.
Yeah, what did you say?
Yeah, if, you know, if you, the right side of the house as it exists now and the carport roof are within few feet of what is being proposed here. There, it's, it's not a significant encroachment into the front of the house.
But doesn't it take the whole front of the house forward, the whole house? I mean-
But not, but not significantly than where it is today, the way it sits the house today. I think that's, I think what we've been hearing from the applicant, that they've been thoughtful about that. And if you visit the property and you eyeball it and walk around it, it's extremely- About that. And if you visit the property and you eyeball it and walk around it is extremely obvious. Um, I should say also for the record that I did run into Mr. Levine. And Charlie, Barry, is it Charlie? And Charlie. And Charlie was, is his dog and was very insistent that he must go inside. So Mr. Levine had to leave, but we did not talk, Ron. About the proposal, we just exchanged niceties. But I, I just want to emphasize that when you visit, I, I do not see. This significantly approaching into the front than what is already there. And, and, but I would love to hear from you, Steve, as to why we need to take these independently.
Can I just say something first? If you don't mind, can you just jump in? Could be our, I've been by the house several times. Trying to get a good feel for it and I thought one visit wasn't enough. And I have the exact opposite feeling of what you just said. I thought it would encroach a lot, so.
Just for the record, I don't have a feeling. It's very obvious when you look at the, the house as it exists now, that it is. The variances that are being sought are just a few feet from what is already there.
Well, maybe Mr. Belo James or whatever should answer that then, like, so, I mean, if you have the carport, like where it sits today versus like.
It's in our drawings. It's in our drawings. It's all in the material submitted. It is clearly marked in all our drawings that we've had. For a couple of months now, frankly. But I'm happy for Lou.
I mean, I'm just trying to get clarification. So I, you know.
Yeah, no, no.
I am not like a professional drawing analyzer.
I went with the drawing and I, and I see it differently.
Just let me make it a statement and we'll go back to you, Debbie. For better or worse, we are kind of like quarantined here. We, we cannot ask Lou for some further information at this.
Oh, sorry.
If we did so, we have to reopen the entire hearing. At each side, make comments, questions, rebuttals. Open for public comment again, et cetera.
Shannon, I, I didn't mean to be, sorry if I came across that. It is clearly marked in the drawings and.
Right, we can look at the drawings.
Yeah.
Okay, will you tell me then? Cause you have it. So. Cause Debbie, like Debbie and you have very different feelings and it would be interesting to have.
And I cut off Debbie there.
Okay.
I want to go back to Debbie and then we'll go over to you.
Yeah, but I, I do, before we proceed, if, if it's okay with, with you, Debbie and Shannon, I would love to hear Steve, why you think we should take the variances.
Sure, um. So I, I think that, that. My sense of the town is. The town respects open space, the town respects trees. And the town has developed this. Building line code. As a unique requirement stricter than the counties. To protect that environment. And. And I think we should, at least I. Respect that and would like to support it. When I look at this. Property, when I look at the drawings. I am comfortable with. Say the first floor addition coming out. To the same. Distance from the street as the existing sort of L shape. But I am not. Anywhere near as comfortable with. The new eve. Or the new bay window. Protruding further into the town's open space. And I'd like to make clear that bay window sounds. Light. But it's actually a solid construction from the ground up. That is 10 feet wide and three feet deep protruding more into the. Town's open space. Then is. Authorized without a variance.
That's helpful. I appreciate that. And I, I'm saying I'm, I'm comfortable. So this helps. Get my point across because it's only three feet more than what's already there. And if it's about the three feet, then that's the discussion we can focus ourselves on. And if I count to balance that with. What we've heard, even though it's not part of our discussions today. But it's hard to ignore. The fact that other trees will be planted and there'll be a rain garden and. Uh, multiple trees will not be cut down. I, you know, and you have to look at. From the perspective of the point you just made, Steve. You know, the total picture of how they are protecting and enhancing the greenscape and.
Kamar, I, I'd also said that I would like the. Variance is considered independently and it's really for the same reason as Steve, that it's not just that the bay window extends for three feet further into it. I'm trying to look for justification for the bay window. And there isn't one there. In other words.
Sorry, that is a design choice. We have absolutely no right to weigh in on a design choice. I, I really want to emphasize.
No, no, Kamar, Kamar, no, you're misunderstanding the variance, okay? A variance requires that.
We cannot weigh in on the design choice.
As expressed in our code with shallowness of the lot on particular practical difficulties, that kind of thing. That's why you should have the variance. I get that for the extending the whole first floor, but I don't see that there's. Anything that the bay window itself. Says is necessary beyond that.
I'm not sure I understand that. The bay window is a design choice. We cannot weigh in on a design choice. We can only weigh in. On the impact it has.
When the design choice requires a new variance, we are required to weigh in on it and it.
No, not on whether there should be a bay window or not. We can only weigh.
There is a specific variance for the bay window.
No, that's what I'm saying. We cannot weigh in. I don't feel comfortable, Robin. I, I mean, you can espouse your views on windows, but I do not feel comfortable. Commenting on windows. I just want to focus on the variance proposal, the specific. You know, encroachment in the front of the house. And that's the point I made that when I visited. I looked at the lot. It's in fact on the drawing, Shannon. If you look at it, I, I'm happy to point you to the right page in the. Documentation we got, there's effectively three feet further in than what's there. And I do not.
What's there was grandfathered in. It's not what would be.
Again, that is, that is, that's been working for this town for multiple years. I do not believe that I am comfortable trying to dial the clock back on that front arbitrarily.
Which, which is fine. We can have different opinions. It's. It's past nine o'clock, so I'd like to try and. Move this forward. And, and that was one reason why I was thinking we could vote separately on the different variances. And, and we might have different opinions on different variances. Are there any other questions or comments on any of the individual variances from, from anyone?
Not for me.
Okay, well, let's.
I would love to treat them all at once.
The four foot eaves, I, I will comment on, I, because I raised that question. I don't think they really are justified.
Again, Robin, what do you mean by that?
Well, what I mean is that if we're, if we are. Eliminating the bay window, unless for the moment say we are eliminating the bay window, then that was one of the justifications for the four foot eaves. The other second justification.
That's not the only justification we heard from the.
A second justification for the four foot.
We need reasonable roofing in the front of the house. Protect you from.
A second justification for the four foot eaves is. Thank you. That the door requires a four foot cover on it. Which can be accomplished by a porch over the door and not, not over the whole thing. And a two and a half foot eve is sufficient for the roof as in our code.
That sounds like an arbitrary design input again.
To be. Is again a variance required for the eaves, therefore we have to rule on that variance. It is not a design.
You are. You're making a design input. Go ahead, Ron.
Ron, Ron has something to say.
All right, yes. So for purposes of a prospective transcript, I think it would be. Important for us to try not to talk over each other. Because that will result in the transcript stating, you know, inaudible. And a reviewing court, for example, would not be able to get the benefit of the whole discussion. So I, I would suggest that. You know, we let each other finish talking before we talk. And then secondly, it may also be helpful if we make findings of fact before we have our motion on each of the elements. Because our decision does need to have findings of fact where the, the council makes. Findings based on the evidence presented with respect to the required variance criteria. So if we're going to talk about whether, you know, there's an unusual condition of the property that. You know, creates a practical difficulty or hardship, then a council member could make that finding for the record, you know. As a precursor to a motion. Or, you know, whether the. Construction interferes with sightlines and the other, you know, criteria that I've mentioned. And, and finally, whether something is the minimum reasonably necessary to overcome. The conditions or situations presented. And so. Generally speaking. The, the council is not designed police, but does have the, the power and the duty to determine. Whether good cause has been shown, you know, whether the requirements for the variance have been made and, you know, can consider whether. You know, design elements are reasonable.
Thank you, Ron. Ron, can you put those three criteria in the chat, the three conditions, the exact language, if you don't mind?
Sure, sure.
And Ron, when you're talking.
It's pretty lengthy. It might be easier if, if Matt would put it up on the screen. Matt, can I just?
Yeah, I think you should put it on the screen because the.
Thank you, thank you.
Ron, you mentioned. Uh, findings of fact as a prelude to voting on. Uh, the questions in front of us. Do we need to vote on findings of fact?
No, no, the council member, individual council.
Let me try something, Ron. And if this, tell me if this is what you're thinking of. I, I do find, and I have visited the lot previously. That it is a very shallow lot. I do not see it possible to build in the back. And so to accomplish a home of the size that they are intending, they do need a variance in the front to, to give them the area for them to build.
Okay. I, I would concur with that too. It's a shallow lot with limited space for any. Uh, structure in the rear.
Well, Mr. Attorney. Don't they have to agree on the findings of fact? The majority that votes has to agree on the findings of fact.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I agree with that view as well for what.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's also funny a fact that there are no issues of sight lines being adversely impacted by any of the proposed variances.
No, I agree with some of this.
Okay. In terms of the variances, I'm not sure there are too many other. Facts in front of us. Let's see how this plays out. I'll take a, a try at. A first motion. That. We approve, if the council approves the variance request for the first floor addition. Does anyone second that stated or wish to modify it?
I'll second it.
Have a question. Is it, is that number one on Ron's map where he colored things in?
It's number one on the variance request sheet from Lou. First floor addition.
Is it number one on Matt's? Is it number one on Matt's summary sheet?
And it's in yellow. It's the yellow one, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have a second. Are folks ready to vote on that?
So is there, who's seconded?
I did.
Okay, you got it right.
I have a question about it before I can vote.
Oh, yes, sure.
Okay, so I've been spending all night trying to figure all this out. So the first floor in yellow shows that. The, um, the building goes, is going just longer. Is that it?
Well, the, the yellow is the eve and I'm sorry I missed the motion because I was sending Matt the. Variance criteria for posting on the screen. Would you repeat the motion?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, the motion is that the council approved the variance request. Number one for the first floor addition.
Ah, okay. Yeah. So that's not the yellow. That's the hatched blue.
The hatched blue. Okay. Hatched blue.
And. And the, the variance that's needed is just the, that portion. That is in front of the dotted line that's labeled EBL.
Right. Just to be clear, it's not the variance for the addition. It's the variance for the first floor setback.
For seven point eight foot. Uh, variance to extend into the established building line setback.
Yeah, that's, that's, that really is what the motion is. Yeah.
And that is to, to just for the first floor and not the second floor. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
We'll take them one at a time.
Does that include the garage? The garage going to be on top of that?
I think the garage is part of the first floor. I don't think garage is on the second floor.
Okay, so this is just the first floor. All right.
The drawings are confusing.
It will include, it is part of the roof of the garage. That section.
Is that where the deck goes?
Yes.
A part of that will hold the deck.
Okay. So is everyone clear what you're voting on?
So it's the, it's, it's the seven point eight feet in front of the EBL of the first floor is what we're voting on. That is.
Right. Yeah, just to be clear, we are voting, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to talk over anyone, but we are voting over. The setback, not the addition. We're voting on the setback, just to be clear.
The variance.
Variants from the setback.
Variants from the setback, exactly.
Which is the variance request associated with the first floor addition.
Yes.
Very good point to be there. We're not actually approving the first floor. That will be part of the verdict building permit application.
So your questions, Debbie might apply more to those aspects when we are approving the building application or reviewing.
And, and Shannon, we haven't heard much from you. Do, do you have any questions? I don't think you've. Many of you have not gone through any of these types of building permit applications before.
I'm sorry, what?
I was just curious if you had any questions. I didn't want to be marching.
No, I mean, you know, my only, my only standpoint is that. The county, or you know, our town's rules and, and variances and all that stuff were put in for a reason. And, um, so that's. My, I, I would hope, I, I feel bad and I feel, you know, like that I want them to get a great house, but. You know, I know this is preliminary and I would hope that we can have them fall within the rules.
Okay, so. Then what I'm hearing is you might not vote for this motion. And that is okay. Okay. But the motion has been made and seconded, so we'll, we'll vote on it now. So who is in favor of? The motion. To approve a variance. Of seven point eight feet for the first floor addition. And I would say aye.
Aye.
So I'm not sure what the count is. Is it? Three to two, four to one?
Well, who, who's voting against? You know, ask. I think. Okay, so it's, I think it's three to, it's passed, it carries three to.
Okay. Very good. Now there's the. The, the, the next motion I propose. Is that the council approved the variance. Us for the second floor addition. In the amount of five point eight feet.
Okay, is there a second on that? One second again.
Again, just to be clear, this is the setback, variance in the setback, correct?
Right.
Applying to the second floor line.
Right, we are not approving the second floor. We're just approving a variance for that second floor.
Okay, is there further discussion on this motion?
Just, can we just go over? That's the red. And that's just the second floor and that would lead out to. If, if, if they had this second floor that looked like this, they would have the sliding doors and they'd be able to have their balcony on the left. Is that correct? Did I understand that right?
On the east side, yes.
Yes, that's, I'm correct in that assumption?
Co- correct, but it, it might be important to note that. The variance is the portion. Co- correct, but it might be important to note that the variance is the portion of the addition that's in front of the EBL. So if you look at the site plan and you see the dotted line, that's the EBL, the portion that's highlighted in red that is in front of the dotted line is the area of the addition that requires the variance.
Yeah, so it's, it's a piece of the, it's a piece of the deck, that's what comes down to.
I see, it's just a piece of it. I get it. So I guess my question about that is, how does that affect the eaves? Don't you have to have the eaves to have that part? Am I wrong? Hate to look stupid here, but-
All right, what was the question?
If we, if we grant this variance-
My Zoom is acting up.
Okay, if we grant this variance, how do we not grant the extension of the eaves then?
No, because this, if I may answer, this is, this is, yeah, this is, we are granting, if we move forward with this, we'll be granting to the exterior wall of the top floor. The wall facing the front of the house.
Right.
We are doing it till there. Then we will look at the eve jutting into the, beyond the EBL, and we will be looking at that as the third variance.
So my question is, you don't, do you, can you approve one without the other? That's my question.
Yes, I think that was the debate, Rob and I were effectively having, yeah.
You're gonna approve one without the other? Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, so is there further discussion on the motion? So hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'd see three in favor, all those opposed. And I see two. So Circo Bar, Kumar in favor, Heller, Rovac opposed.
Steve is the next one, the eve or the bay window?
Right, so the next one is the new bay window. And Kabir, I don't think you will like my motion, but my motion is that the council not, that the council disapprove the variance request for seven point eight feet for the new bay window. Does not approve.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so Bar second.
I second it.
Is there discussion on that?
You know, I would love to understand your thinking on that, Steve.
It's just protruding more towards the street than any of the existing structure.
Yes, but-
And it's a solid-
Just by three feet? Is that insignificant?
Three feet is not insignificant.
It's not insignificant here. Okay, that's useful.
To me.
To you, okay. Because when you look at the current house, you know, it's just not significantly protruding, not that much more than what's already there. And in fact, I don't know if this is true. I believe it is roughly in line with the roof of the carport intrusion today. Roughly. Is that, it falls? Can someone correct me if I'm wrong there?
But it is solid structure from the ground up. And I see no compelling reason for it to protrude further into the, the town space. And that's just me. I appreciate your perspective, Kabir, that you don't want the council, I guess, meddling in the aesthetics of homeowners.
I sincerely believe that's the majority perspective of the town. It's not just mine.
Well, I, I see it as a trade off between what is the, the, the community interest in having buildings set back and, and the design choices of individual owners. And in this case, it is something like 10 feet beyond the setback. It's, it's, it's quite substantial, and it's only about 21 feet from the street. And that's, that's why I, I look for a higher standard than is why is there a particular need for this? And I, I don't see that higher, higher.
Except, Robin, we establish facts that it is a shallow lot. That it is difficult to build in the back. And I further added that the existing structure is effectively where this is now. And I genuinely believe that additional three feet is not going to adversely affect the quality of the town's life.
Said we, our opinions differ and fair enough.
Yep, I think that would be established in any scenario.
Yeah. I would like to say, Kabir, with that line of thinking, it would be that anything goes because everything is a design choice. I think in, in most houses that are being redone, that they're design choices. And if you say that we're blocking something because it's, we don't like the design is one thing. But what we're saying here, I think, is we want to maintain the integrity of our, our variance rules. I think that's it. It's easier to, you know, that's my point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But I think you misunderstood me, Debbie. I'm saying that currently that the way the house sits is not far from what is being proposed here.
I hear you.
So that's what I'm saying. I think if it was significant, if we were seeking a significant protrusion from what, how the house sits today, I would be in line with you. And even then, by the way, I would not be making comments on design choices.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yeah, so just to clarify, a vote in favor is a vote to disapprove that variance request. So I'm in favor of disapproving.
Okay, I see four in favor of the motion. And is there someone opposed?
I'm opposed for obvious reasons, already stated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. President, you got another motion?
Okay. The last item here is the, the new eve, the four foot eve. And my, my perspective is the same as with the new bay window. And my motion I propose is that the council disapproves the request for a nine point three foot variance to build a new eve.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think Heller seconded. Okay, discussion?
Again, I would add that this does not significantly protrude further into the front of the house in a shallow lot based on where the house exists today. It's a fact. Again, I know you visited the house. I did that again today for the same reason. It does not significantly protrude. And I think we are simply dinging this applicant based on reasons that I am not satisfied from what I'm hearing from all of you. I do not think this will protect the green space. Well, you're not stating any facts. You're expressing it's a philosophical view. You know, like we want to preserve even two feet.
I mean-
I'm sorry if it's unfair. It is someone's house. No, no, we, I am representing the applicant's perspective here.
I know, but I think what Shannon said earlier-
Hold on, each talking term.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. You can, you can go at me, Debbie. I welcome-
No, I'm not going at you. Just saying what Shannon said earlier was, the idea was to respect the code and to respect why we, you know, why we have what we have. So it's not saying it's philosophical. It's just saying there's a code, and, and I agree with Shannon that we should try to stick by them. And those are facts. It's a fact that there's a code.
No, I agree. I agree. I don't think we are debating the code. I think this is a variance here.
You said that I didn't say any facts as to why I was not-
But then, well, may I, I think what I understood you to say, Shannon, and I'm sorry if I misinterpreted you, what I understood you to say was that if I followed your logic, we would not entertain any variance. At least I am not of that view. And that's why it's a tricky, these are tricky discussions. This is why I encouraged, I encouraged you to visit the house. That's why I went and looked at the-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is it significantly changing how the house sits now? It is not.
But, and that's your opinion.
No, no, it's, it's a fact. It's three feet further in from what is there.
But how can you say, I mean, three feet can be a lot. I'm only five feet tall. Three feet is very, a big amount of my-
That's why when Steve said, when Steve said that is significant to me, I respected that. I do not believe that is significant.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Well, I mean, where's Steve gone? I think we could call motion. I'm hoping Steve comes back.
Okay, so be, before he comes back, Mr. Town Attorney, is there sufficient information provided for the findings of fact now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the decision is not final until it's reduced to writing. So I, I will prepare a written decision and include the findings of fact that I understand the council are making. And there will be an opportunity to correct my language if I'm in error.
So you will pass that around to the council for its issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of this motion? Raise your hand.
Disapprove the variance request.
Disapprove.
Disapprove the variance.
Bar, Circo, Heller, and Rovac and opposed to that motion? Kumar, Councilor Kumar. Okay, thank you. This concludes the public hearing. Thank you to all the parties. As he said, the town attorney will now write a written decision based on the council motion, and the decision will be given to all interested parties by the town manager. Thank you, everyone. We will now move to the next item. Which is another variance hearing to, I'm sorry, it's a building permit application with a variance to consider a building permit application for the construction of a second and third floor addition to be built on the existing one-story home driveway, new garage, and roof deck on the property located at 5522 Greystone Street, including a 3.9 foot variance for the front established building line, as submitted by Miriam Rosenthal and Michael Phillips. And before, before I officially read the, opened the hearing, I did want to assist the town manager in identifying some of the participants on this Zoom. So I think that we need to know for the record, Mr. Town Manager, who is it that, is anyone still on that you need to find out who they are?
I think I was able to get everybody identified, so I think-
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Good to go, moving forward.
Okay, good. So here we go. Today is September 8th, 2021. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for variance application 21098 to consider a building permit application submitted by Miriam Rosenthal and Michael Phillips, including a 3.9 foot variance for the front established building line for the house located on the property at 5522 Greystone Street. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant's staff or other interested parties relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss amongst themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We will now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This hearing is to consider a building permit application for the construction of a second and third floor addition to be built on the existing one-story home driveway, new garage, and roof deck on the property located at 5522 Greystone Street, including a 3.94 foot variance on the front established building line as submitted by Miriam Rosenthal and Michael Phillips. The applicant submitted their completed applications to the town on August 12th, and after review from the town staff, submitted EBL calculations and a revised building site plan. The applicant was informed that the balcony was wider than 10 feet and then, and therefore did not comply with the section of the Somerset Code that allows balconies to encroach into the setback. A balcony per the Somerset Code is defined as being no wider than 10 feet in length and three feet in depth. Thus, the proposed balcony must be evaluated as part of the building, and, and the front of the balcony is subject to the front building line restrictions. Thus, the applicant is requesting a 3.9 foot variance on the established building line. Neighbors were notified by a letter from the town hall in August 26th of this request. One set of neighbors, Lena and Maurice Seo, met with myself on September 1st to express some concerns about the proposed structures and their objections to the variance that was being sought as it would negatively impact the light coming onto their property. And their letter is included in the council's packet. The applicant has received county approval for the project and is including the variance application as part of its general building permit application. As such, the town arborist has provided a tree protection plan and a tree removal report for the proposed construction. The applicant is seeking to remove one town tree in the footprint of the proposed relocated driveway and one private tree that's in the footprint of the proposed construction. With that, I will turn it over to a town engineering consultant, Doug Lohmeyer.
Just one clarification. I believe the variance is for 3.84 feet, not 3.94. Other than that, I, that has covered all of the conditions. And again, I would recommend that if the variance is approved, that the applicant provide a wall check to make sure that the additions comply with the variance approval. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the applicant's opening statement and presentation of their application. And for the record, will the applicants please identify themselves?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, before we get to the applicant, Dr. Feather also had his report. I don't, I don't know if it's pertinent to have him-
Is there a tree, there's a tree with this?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Feather.
Yes, the applicant's proposing to remove the, it's a red maple, 34 inch red maple on the street to install a new curb cut and driveway. And my comments on the, on the street trees on Greystone, on the even side of the street, they're all red maples. They're maturing trees. They've probably been there 25 or 30 years. And they, they, each, each year, we have to work through them and remove dead wood. If you walk down the street today, you'll see we're preparing to do that tomorrow. There's a lot of dead. So they are not in that good a shape, but we keep them as long as we can. And we've been taking those out slowly. So I just want the council to consider, this is probably not a tree that's going to be there for, you know, more than five years when they make their consideration. The other tree was a tree that I suggested they take out. It's a dogwood in the back, and it's because it's too close to the proposed construction. So the bonding requirement is $1,000 and and the red maple should be replaced with smaller trees, at least two red buds because it's under wires. And the private tree can be replaced with an ornamental tree such as a dogwood. There are quite a few canopy trees in the back. And that's shown on the tree protection plan. I've done two options for the tree protection plan. If the street tree is retained as option- If the street tree is retained, is option one, and option or option one is if the street tree is removed, and option two is if it's retained. And then there's also tree protection in the back for three large trees in the back corner. So this back corner, too, also is where those three trees are, is higher than the north side of the property. There's quite a grade change, maybe five, five feet, maybe as much as five feet. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, Ms. Rosenthal and Mr. Phillips, it's your turn. Thank you for attending tonight.
We live at fifty-five twenty-two Suri Street. My name is Miriam Rosenthal, and this is my husband, Michael Phillips.
Michael Phillips.
Um, I think we'll let the architect go from here. I mean, you stated what we wanted to do with our house, which is add two stories at the same footprint and move the garage over. I mean, there's a carport now. Move the garage over on the right side.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to choose this Eric Saul, our architect.
Great. Hi, everybody. I'm Eric Saul with Saul Architects. And if you don't mind, can I share my screen to go through this presentation?
Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
All right. So I just want to start with the site plan to show. And I don't know how, I want to keep this short. I know the last one went really long. So if there's something I'm doing that I don't need to talk about, and I only need to be concerned about one aspect, please cut me off, but I'll just kind of talk about everything in general as briefly as possible. So right now, the house is this dotted line here. And I can see go around. Our building restriction line is really right at the face of our house and ten feet off the back. So the only addition, we can't really go anywhere but up. So that's why we focused on very, you know, two more floors going up, because we only have this one little ten-foot sliver that we can actually build out on. And then the sides were pretty much locked in. So our proposal is basically a vertical addition. We're proposing to move our driveway to the other side, because this is a lower side, and this is really high, and they wanted a two-car garage. So we had to basically carve out into the house a two-car garage. Right now, there's a carport here. So it would be really impractical to do that, but if by digging down to the basement level, we could get a garage in the basement where it's less, you know, unsightly, it's sort of buried in the ground, and it just looks better from a site point of view and more practical on the first floor. You don't have this big garage with half your footprint of the house. So that's our reasoning for doing that. Going to the overall views, let me zoom out a little bit. Ignore the colors. This is just very, it's very generic kind of layout of the front. You can see where we put our garage down here. Basically, from this line up, from this hand signal up is the new addition. We took the carport, made a sunroom in the front, and roof decks, flat roofs everywhere. So this is our general design. Just to be brief, to go over the one part that is, question is this balcony? And I also have a question whether this is a balcony or is it a roof deck? Technically, it sits on a roof. This garage sticks out a couple of feet from this house. And if you're on top of this roof, you're technically a deck. But if you're on two feet of roof, are you still a deck? A deck can go nine feet out. A balcony can only go three feet out and have all these limits. So but what is that definition? What, how do we know that this isn't a deck? So that's going to be one of my questions today. Also, if we went out, we can go up five more feet with this and simply just put a post on each end, and we'd be fine. We can go the whole length of the house. We chose not to have a front porch because the owners didn't want to be on grade here. They want to be up high, and so we thought, let's not do a front porch. Let's make this our front porch where they can hang out on the second floor. So we wanted a bigger outdoor space on this level as opposed to a bigger outdoor space on this lower level. So we would like this to be a little bit bigger. We're only asking for four feet out from the house. There is going to be a roof on here anyway, because there's two feet of garage sticking out. This is existing, and the new setbacks, based on the town code of a BRL, we had to move this upper two floors back almost two feet behind this existing portion. So created a roof area here. So we're going to have a flat roof similar to this right here anyway. So we thought, let's just put a railing on it and have it a usable balcony that's more than three feet. Three feet's not really comfortable to put some chairs out on. So we're really asking for one more foot than what's really, you know, required. And again, I think this is a deck. The drawing said balcony, it was mentioned as a balcony, but technically it sits over a structure, sits on a roof for a portion of it, and then overhangs. But a deck can overhang. You can have a deck with a cantilever. So if this is a deck, and I would like the, the town to let me know, like, what the definition, definition is between that, you know, can this qualify as a deck and therefore just meet the code? Also, our, our other option would be we could just put a post on each end of this, and it's all of a sudden the deck, if it needs a post. So they want this space. They really want at least four feet. They want more, but we decided, well, let's try to, you know, play with being nice neighbors and all that. So we stuck with a more minimal dimension. So that's where we're sort of leaving that definition to you and letting us know what we can do or what you're willing to approve. The rest of this really meets all the codes. There's no issue. There was some concern about this break, the upper penthouse. It's a staircase leading up to here, but the county talked to Doug Lohmeyer, and they apparently both agree that this is within our rights to do, within right to have a protruding, non-habitable staircase up to the roof. We've angled it so it doesn't really impact the neighbors. And we think that really, everything we've done is, is keeping in standards with the spirit of Town of Somerset and what, and, you know, trying not to affect the light on the neighbors. Obviously, vertically, we, we, it's going to create a shadow, but we're still within right run of those pipelines. So we hope that this balcony can be a reviewed as a deck, or we will can turn it into a deck by simply just putting posts here. But we really would like four feet, and I really don't think the posts are something anybody wants. But we can do that if our, if the owners really want that, that dimension. And there's really, it's really becomes a deck and not a balcony. So that's it. I'll let you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions of the applicant. I'll look forward to either Ron or Doug talking about explaining the difference between the deck and the porch.
Well, why, well, why don't you ask that question now?
Okay. So it sounds like there's confusion or disagreement about whether or not a variance is even required. Doug or Ron, can you provide clarification?
Well, I, I can go first. The application referred to this element as a balcony, as do the plans submitted. That's how it's been reviewed. I've not considered the argument that it could be a, a deck alternatively, and I need time to do that. The town code does not define deck or porch. A lot of the town's building regulations are drawn from county regulations. The county doesn't define deck either. The county does define porch. You know, I think one thing I'll, I'll need to consider is to some extent, we're applying building regulations that may have had different building elements in mind at the time they were drafted, as opposed to, you know, what's being presented in temporary construction. So I would suggest that the council review the application tonight based on whether it's, it's a balcony. And then, you know, subsequently, we can assess whether it's a deck. And that determination could nullify the need for a variance, but perhaps doesn't have to be made tonight.
Thank you.
I think you wanted.
I'm just curious. Our town engineer had any thoughts on the matter. Doug?
We reviewed it based on the application being a balcony or a because it was wider than ten feet, we determined that it was part of the building. We never considered the deck situation. So again, I'm, I'm with Ron. I don't have an answer for that. So we'd have to look into that further if that's.
Thank you. I think that will help focus our discussions tonight.
Does that include your questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. Council member Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, it was, it's really all on the same issue. I mean, I read the permit application and it justifies the balcony as needed to cover the roof overhang. But in fact, the balcony extends beyond the roof overhang. And so it then puts it into an ambiguous situation. If it was only the roof overhang, it could as well be a deck, certainly, but it extends beyond the roof overhang, which can put more into a balcony territory. That was the way I saw it. So I don't have any further questions than that, but that was just to show you my thinking.
Okay, thank you. Council member Heller.
Yes, I don't really understand this deck or porch situation. If there is a, an overhang for the, that's, that's the garage, and you need another foot or two to make it a viable porch or deck, you need a variance. But you're saying that you can get away with it by making it one or the other, which was the deck is not one you need a variance for? But don't you need, isn't the depth, isn't the depth the same? Don't you need? You know, no. So you can come out as far as you want if you call it a deck. Is that it?
You know, I can, oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Who is your?
I just want to clarify the difference between a deck, the setbacks. So a deck can go nine feet into the front setback, the full length of the front. A balcony can only go three feet into the setback and only ten feet wide. So by basically switching the definition or putting posts under this thing and making it look like a deck, because that's technically, a deck is a structure underneath. A balcony projects from a wall. We have a structure underneath. That's only partially underneath. But however you want to view that, we're, this is our compromise, basically what we're saying. We're saying, look, we could have put posts under this and made this a deck, and that's what the owners would like for the size. But we're compromising. Let's make it a little shorter. Let's make it look like a balcony. If we don't get this approved, we're going to make this bigger, and we're just going to put posts under it. So this is our compromise to be nice, not be nice. Sorry, that's not right, but to basically be a better neighbor and not take as much as we can. So we're hoping that we can compromise on.
Well, it's really not a compromise. You put a gun in my back and said, well, if you don't let me do it this way, I'm going to do it the other way. That's what you said. And you said, well, to be nice to the neighbors, and if I were them, I would be nice to the neighbors no matter what, because they are your neighbors for a long time. Okay, so put that in your pocket, Miriam, all right?
I would not, hold on. I would not say put a gun to anybody, because everything we're doing is by right in terms of a deck. So we're trying to eliminate posts for aesthetic reasons, and we're trying to make this as small as we can for the neighbors. So it's, it's truly a compromise. It's not a threat. So we, we're willing to trade our posts that go down to the ground for the modern look if we can have a little bit more on the depth. So it's, it's purely asking for compromise. It's not a threat.
I hear you. Another question.
Okay, Councilor Heller, did you want the town attorney or anyone else weigh in on your question?
Well, the town attorney has his hand raised. I wouldn't turn him down.
Yeah, appreciate that. So I can offer some explanation with respect to the purposes and intents of the setbacks and the permissible exceptions for projections. Setbacks generally apply to the walls of a structure. But the code allows projections as exceptions because, you know, frankly, projections are promoted because they tend to break up the visual mass of the structure, but only if the projections are modest themselves. So for example, with respect to the balcony, if, if a balcony is wider than ten feet, it's no longer a balcony. It's considered a wall of the building, and the regular setback applies. And you compare that to porches and decks, which typically do not have walls. They're more open in construction, not subject to width requirements, because they don't present the same visual mass as a wall does. But I think that would be the difference why, or the reason why the code distinguishes between balconies and decks, because your balcony typically, if too wide, presents much more visual mass than an open deck with your railings, let's say, that are of open construction. But the code does not, does not contain definitions, so the council has to interpret what the code means. But I think looking at the historical intent of the code will help you arrive at an interpretation.
Okay, Councilmember, next question.
I had two other questions. Hopefully, they're quick. One is that shadow you talked about, that you use the word, it really doesn't make a shadow or much of a shadow. I think you said, Eric, I thought you said something along that line about shadow that the.
So we, we're, we're going to have a, we're going to have a roof overhang project thirty inches beyond, sorry, thirty inches into the setback over a roof. So this first floor can have a thirty-inch projection on it for roof overhang. So whether or not there's a railing here, or maybe it's, we, and also, we're also open to like a different type of rail. It doesn't have to be a wall. It could be something more like glass or whatever. We're totally happy to play with this, but there will be a structure here that creates a overhang, and it will be this deep, because we're allowed to. We can go thirty inches. We're probably a couple of inches less than that with this design. So the shadow from at least the, the structure, the floor of this won't change. It's really the railing on top of this that is the definition that we're debating. We need, we need a roof because we have an offset in the building.
But the last question is stormwater management. And I was wondering with your garage going down a little bit, you know, are you going to get water flowing down in there? And does it go into their basement, or does it go into their neighbor's basement? You know, where's it going?
We have a drain that's proposed, a French drain in the, in the driveway. So when water comes down into this, and then it goes around the back, and it takes it around the side of the house. I think I closed that window accidentally. Let me see if I can get that open again. Let's see here. Yeah, so, so you can see this trench drain here. And that comes out this way. It goes along the house and empties back here. Our stormwater management, the county, they said the square footage of this was not large enough to qualify for, it's considered a small lot improvement, and we're not exceeding a certain number. So they said that we do not have to meet stormwater management for digging out this area and, and doing the addition. The addition was busy walkout, so we're not really doing much here.
I, I get that, but you, you know, we, we, we have terrible water problems here. So I hope that in your plan, you really thought about the neighbors as well as, you know, your client, you know, but I hope it, it's, you've really encompassed, you know, thought about this and not say, well, the county said it didn't have to, you know.
True. Yeah, I mean, we hired this very expensive firm to do all these plans for us. But we're totally prepared to, uh, do everything we can. So, yeah, we have, we have a stormwater, even though it's not required, we have like notes on storm, you know, water, and here, I'll zoom in here. So we have like drainage notes.
That's okay. All right, you answered my question.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Council member Kumar, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumon, do you have any questions?
Yes, so Ron, just to clarify, we are, this is a variance application for a balcony structure protruding 3.9 feet beyond the EBL.
Correct. But because it's wider than 10 feet, we actually don't deem it a balcony anymore. We
It's part of the, part of the structure. Got it, got it. Yeah, thanks, Ron. This was harder for me. I also visited this because this lot, and I think it's a complete transformation of the lot, you know. I don't want to compare it with the previous hearing, but this is a complete fundamental transformation of the lot, even though it's a renovation. And Eric, it's hard for me to see the balcony distinct from the broader mass and form of the house, three stories. So, you know, the question comes to my mind is what efforts could be made for that to sit more lightly, perhaps, that could enhance the, you know, impact on, on the neighbors. And I read the letter and the package from one of the neighbors and they're concerned about the overhang over them. So this one is a little tricky for me because I looked at the entire structure and, you know, it's an added mouse to that structure. I don't have a question for you, I guess, so along Robin's line, just sharing my thinking.
Will you be able to share those when you're deliberating? Did you, did you have any questions of any?
No, 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 no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rovak.
So for our town attorney, um, so is that in fact true? Like if they were to make this balcony, whatever we call it, structure bigger and just put up two stakes into the ground, would that comply with the town code?
Probably not, but it would depend on whether you find that it would be a deck. So again, the town code doesn't require a definition, so it requires the council to apply interpretation. And, you know, I'm just looking now at definitions of deck versus balcony. And it appears the term deck is Middle English from Middle Dutch with nautical connotations, meaning the covering, especially on a ship. And then later meaning a platform that looks resembles a ship. So, you know, think of the ordinary meaning of deck, right? We all know what a deck is. And that's a construction, a platform with boards aligned next to each other. I think that's what the code means when we say a deck. It's typically of open construction, so it doesn't add visual mass to a structure. And that's why it's allowed to project nine feet. A balcony, on the other hand, is a platform enclosed by a wall on the outside of a building with access from an upper floor. So, you know, I think we can apply normal definitions and then based on what it looks like, you can decide whether it's a balcony or a deck.
But, Mr. Town Attorney. Mr. Town Attorney, related to Councilmember Rovak's question, if the council turns down the variance and they decide they would like to change the design, they have to resubmit it, right?
Correct. Yeah. And if it's resubmitted as a deck and the town finds that it is a deck, then it would be allowed to project nine feet.
So does that help you, Councilmember Rovak?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, did you have any further questions?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. We ask that those making public comments, please be respectful of the council's time and keep all testimony and evidence relevant to the application at hand and not be repetitive. I note for the record that the council has received email testimony from Maurice and Lena Asayo, the north side neighbors of the property, who have raised their objection to the second story balcony, which necessitates the variance hearing. So, Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this application?
There are no other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. So the applicant now has the opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. That is testimony that has not been introduced previously and that directly responds to the public comments presented. Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
I guess I would like to rebut to some of the comments made by the, I really.
Yes, this is your opportunity.
Yeah, so just going back to the definition of deck and balcony, I think we have to remove the aesthetics of the railing because there is no aesthetic railing definition. So you can't, I don't think it's really right to say that, well, you can have glass and that's solid. You can have railing, that's open. You can have cables, that's more open. You can have a solid wall. There are front porches with solid walls, three feet tall, in the historic district where I live in Tulum Park. And so there is no, and that's a porch, and that can go nine feet out. So that this openness is really the subjective part. What's not subjective is that if I put two posts under this balcony and extend it five more feet forward, it will qualify as legal. And there will not be variants. Again, we don't want that. We know the neighbors don't want that. So we're trying to get, we're trying to come up with a compromise. A balcony is a projection from a wall. There is no structure underneath. It is purely cantilevered on its own. There is nothing holding it up. So because if you're standing on the roof, let's say, let's say the garage was 10 feet out, not two feet out. Would you be staying on a deck or would you be staying on a balcony? I think everybody would say they're staying on a roof deck. So whether the garage is two feet out or 10 feet out, you are standing on a deck. I believe this is a deck. I agree, we've made it say balcony. That is our, you know, when we did this, we had to submit this a long time ago. We, the variance came up very late. And it was a surprise for us. So we didn't have time to really plan this discussion out, but during the times we did have, the last couple of weeks, up until this hearing, this is when this came up. So that's why we're bringing it up kind of at the last minute. But we are standing on a roof for part of this. Regardless, even if we're not staying on part of the roof, we can go bigger and we can do posts. But what my client really wants is more than three feet to be on this space. Three feet is really uncomfortable, especially when you think about where the railing sits. It's really two and a half feet. And you can't really enjoy being outside on a two and a half foot thin strip. So if we're only asking for one more foot beyond what's reasonable and a wider dimension. So keep, please consider that when you're making this decision.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application. And rather than asking if there's a motion, I'm going to turn it over to the council president to lead the decision-making process and the deliberation.
Okay. I think the first, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and want to thank my council members for, I thought we worked very well, worked through the previous variance request very well. This is a little more narrowly focused. And I guess the only, like, reference point I'd like to suggest as we discuss this is that the building, the building permit request is for a balcony. So I think that's what we need to consider here. So if there's a scenario where we don't approve a balcony, they could come back and say, well, it's not really balcony, it's a deck. And then we reconsider it as whether or not it's a deck and is that okay? But we're looking at it as a balcony. I don't know if there are any findings of fact that pertain to this. I guess one finding of fact is we do have a neighbor who has.
It's more clarification that it, we're considering it as part of the building rather than formally not as a balcony. Because it's beyond the 10-foot width limit that we allow for balconies.
Thank you, yes. And this is a full building permit application. Right? This is the only variance within that permit application.
Correct.
But there are also, so we need to be looking at the variance request. You also need to be looking at, for example, the trees, the tree management. Or station plan, thank you. So let's take it one at a time with the variance request. Does anybody have any thoughts on this variance request to lead the discussion?
I mean, in the end, I come, I come back down to this is probably the best solution, but it's not a great solution. In other words, it's an awkward structure that is not a balcony and not a deck, you know. But they have this overhang and the question is what to do with the overhang. I think the best way to handle the overhang is what they're doing, which is creating, in essence, a balcony out of it that they can then use, whereas it's otherwise wasted space. So, I mean, I support it for that reason.
I, I agree that it's a reasonable approach to a, like in engineering or architectural issue with the project. But what I heard them, heard the applicants or the architect explain at the beginning was, you know, the residents want a certain amount of space to, to hang out. I think there are other, other areas where they could do it, even, even on the ground. They could have a deck on the ground floor and just stick out. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah.
Come on.
My concern, I agree with you, Steve. They have other places to hang out, okay? But they want a front deck, I get that. But my concern are the neighbors. And I, I think it's, it's in the neighbor's face. You know, I went by the property too. Surprised we didn't bump into each other today, but I went by and, and it is a small property and I get, I get why they have to go up. But I think when you put that, that porch balcony, whatever you're gonna put on, in the front of it, I think it's in the neighbor's face. And, and I think that's, and I I couldn't support it for that reason, you know.
Okay.
That's where I am.
Any thoughts, Shannon or Kabir?
Well, I mean, after I made my whole like stance on variances, like I kind of think that I think, I think that it's like a good compromise. So you know, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that to the point, like you can make a big giant deck out on the front and it follows all the rules. So, you know, the fact that this already has like an overhang and a roof, you know, that roof is already there and I, for the garage, I assume that that roof is already, I mean, is compliant. And so, you know, to have, I mean, to me, it's just, it's like, I understand their aesthetic, that aesthetic look to it. But it would be compliant, right? If they were just to end it at that three feet, they just want the extra one, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I.
As I've been thinking about Shannon's point earlier about following the code. And I think the, and I'm not joking, I think the, you know, aspect of considering variances, this sort of the form and the mass and how it sits and how does it contribute, how does it change how the house works, along with the rest of, of the houses and on that street and in the, in the neighboring area. And I feel that this is while the small lot, this is quite a sizable structure. And anything we can do to lighten this structure, I think, was probably going to be received favorably by neighbors and and will probably enhance, sort of minimize the impact this is gonna have on them. As Eric pointed out, it's gonna cast a shadow and so that's where my mind is going, is that how do we achieve that? And I really don't want to get into making design recommendations and, and it's probably easier to propose a yes or no view rather than design recommendations. So I'm leaning towards no.
Thank you, Kabir. Thank you, Shannon. One thought I have that I think at least is guiding my thoughts as I look at how I'll vote is that we should focus on the variance request at hand as opposed to the potential fallout of that request. You know, they might, they could shorten the balcony from 10 feet to nine feet and then it becomes a balcony. There's no variance request. Or they can make it not as wide, or they could turn it into a huge deck. But we might not call it a deck because it has an access on a second floor. There are all these variables. I think personally, I think we just need to focus on this variance request for this balcony.
I appreciate that line of thinking. Because there is, there are a lot of multiple variables. And I think frankly, I thought that comment by the architect was a bit callous. So.
So based on that, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, so, so my motion is the council disapprove the request for a variance for the proposed balcony.
Before I ask for a second, let's consult with the town attorney as to whether that would be the correct.
It's not balcony, it's not balcony.
That motion, that motion is sufficient, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the council president's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I see, Councilmember Kumon, is there discussion on that motion?
Just, yeah, before you can guess, I'd approve it myself. Sorry, what did you say, Robin?
Does everybody understand?
I'd approve it myself. I mean, is it gonna have an overhang just open there? If we, if there's no balcony, that's the point. So it's not gonna look very attractive that way. The balcony does in fact give more form to it and use and function for the owners. And that's why I thought it was a reasonable solution.
Actually, I don't agree with you. I think they, I think it would be fine, the overhang. You know, so I, I, that's why.
Okay, so does everybody understand the motion? You want to restate the motion, Mr. President?
Well, I had a question or comment. I hear people talking about the overhang. My understanding is that where the garage is located, there's going to be a roof over that garage. And the house that's being built above it will be set back. So the house doesn't require variance, but as the house is set back, there's this like empty space on top of the leading edge of the garage that they want to turn into a balcony. But there, I don't understand this terminology of an overhang. Can someone explain?
Maybe the town attorney can explain that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was confused by the reference to the overhang as well.
Well, I'm saying is that there will be a platform above the garage that is empty and sticking out.
I think.
But it's not sticking out. It's just the, above the garage. Nothing's sticking out unless we approve it to stick out.
It's, yeah, couldn't, couldn't it just be a roof?
It protrudes two and a half feet. It, that's the point. I mean, if you read the permit application, it explains it to you. I gotta go back.
Dave, Robyn is correct. There will be, it won't be set back. There'll be a protrusion. That's the overhang above the garage. That, what is being proposed is extending that and wrapping it to look like what it is now, you know, balcony, but we are considering it as an extension of the.
But the protrusion is, is defined by code.
The protrusion is. The protrusion is mine. Ron, can you help us there?
Well, a cornice or eve can project. Two and a half feet. So instead of a balcony, there could be a roof there.
So that eve is two and a half feet, but you know, what is being proposed now is expanding that a bit more to almost four and then wrapping it. So that's what it is now. So Eric is shaking his head. I. If there is a, if you have a wrong interpretation of this.
I think.
I think it's three feet that they have. It's already set for three feet and they just want to add an extra foot.
Matt, can you help us?
Yeah, so the existing structure. Goes into the the established building line. And so then what they've done is for the addition, so the second floor. Is two two feet or two and a half feet or whatever it is. Back from the existing building line. And so there's that two and a half feet. That would be at the end of the second story, but it's still the roof of the existing first story.
Got it. And I think that's what Steve was describing.
Right?
Yeah. Got it. So there's no overhang. There's no overhang. There's no. Yeah.
Mr. President, do you want to restate your motion on the floor?
My my motion is that the council. Disapprove the various requests. For a balcony.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? So I see Circo, Kumar and Heller, all those opposed. Okay, I see Barr and Rovak. Okay, thank you. So now, Mr. President, are you prepared to make a motion on the building permit and the other related?
I guess this is a question for the town attorney. I don't think I've seen this situation before. So the permit. Includes this variance request, which we have now. Disapproved. Can we still approve the building permit without the variance? What are we approving?
Yeah, you could approve. The plans as presented with the condition that. The balcony be removed so that there is no projection into the. Front setback.
Okay. Thank you. We focused this for the council. We focused a lot on this variance request. But I think there's still questions that we should at least. Lightly consider on things like stormwater management and. Reforestation.
On reforestation, I don't know if anyone can. Kind of jog our memory on. What we were presented. I maybe I can pull it up.
Right, that's exactly what I'm trying to think.
Yeah, because I admittedly I was focused on the variance as well.
The town manager can do that.
Yeah.
Can you help us, Matt?
Tolbert is still here.
Yes, yes, and Tolbert is also here. Maybe Tolbert would be best to address that.
The lot is pretty heavily wooded in the back. The front has the. The street tree, the large red maple there now. But anything, those are three phase wires. Overhead. So we plant smaller trees such as red buds or dogwoods or service berry under wires. So I'm suggesting they plant at least two red buds if they take out the the large red maple. And then ornamental tree in the back for the dogwood can be red bud or dogwood or. Service barrier. White fringe tree or anything smaller.
Well, but you're saying remove which trees?
There's a small dogwood in the back that's kind of in the footprint of the the new stairwell. And then the the tree in the front is a street tree that would be removed to put in the new driveway for the garage.
I see. And and this, that's the red maple.
Yeah, number one is the red maple. Number two.
How old is this red maple?
I it's at least, at least thirty, twenty five, thirty or or more. But like I say. Those are slowly. Declining on on gray stone. Just because they're, I mean, they're street trees, plus they've been heavily. Pruned by. The utility over the years because it is a three phase wire. So they they go twenty five feet or fifteen feet clearance when they do prune. And then we've been taking dead wood out of them every year, too. Every year, there's a lot of dead wood that we work through every every fall or in December.
So it's within a few years of being.
Yeah, I I know way of knowing, but it's not. It's not a long. That's not going to be there.
Got it. Yeah.
Yeah. But that's something to consider, but I mean, it it benefits the area now. So I mean, those are things to consider.
Okay, so Mr. President, are you prepared now to make a motion?
I said one more question about stormwater. Management is. I mean, from finding a fact, it looks like the lot coverage is. Is is reasonable, is good, is not pushing up against the limits. But are are we changing the lot coverage, the footprint?
Most most of the new construction is up, so it's not changing.
That's what I thought.
But it is increasing it slightly, but not enough to trigger the stormwater chapter and stop from the county. So that's that's what the architect said. The, as Shannon brought up, the driveway or Debbie, I think it was Debbie. The driveway going down creates a drainage problem, of course, going downhill. And that's handled by a French drain, which takes the water out the back and flows around the back of the house. I think that's that is an appropriate stormwater plan.
Okay, and thank you very much for that summary, Robin. With that, I'm prepared to try my hand at a motion. That we approve the building permit for fifty five twenty two Graystone Street. With the reforestation plan as described by the town arborist. And with the. Exception of the variance that was not approved.
And the required building wall check from town engineer.
Oh, and required building wall check.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that I should have asked the town attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I might just add that. With the condition that the the subject balcony depicted on the plans be removed and replaced with a roof over the first floor that complies with the town code. Of course, the applicant is free to submit a revised request.
Okay, so you I'd say that you accept that President Circo and Councilor Kumar. Okay, okay, fine. So the motion's on the floor. Is there is there discussion?
I want to say that I struggle with these tree removals, you know, and just share personally when we did our project or house, that was the one regret I have that. And I've mentioned this to Rob and then we removed this dogwood. It was. You know, it's very hard, twenty thirty year old tree, you know, to get it back. So I struggled with that, but I understand that this is. You know, later in its life and, you know, allows this. Project to happen. They are not extending the footprint. So just wanted to share my thinking on that front, but. I struggle with that.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
As I say. I was just gonna say, thank you, Kabir, and I agree with you. It's a non trivial issue.
It is.
removals. I think it's based on the the the. The advice or insights from our town arborist. I think it's reasonable in this case, but it's not an easy decision.
I'm not. I'm not really reacting to this one because. It has a lot of canopy trees at the back and and is in fact therefore retaining a lot of water. So in terms of its. Total percentage water retention, losing the dogwood is not very much.
Okay, that's helpful.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. I think that was unanimous. Thank you very much. And let's see, I have to read one more. So this concludes the public hearing. Thank you to all the parties. The town attorney will now issue a written. Decision based on the council motion and the decision will be given to all interested parties by the town manager. The next item is the building administrator's report. Sir.
Yes. Just real quickly, go over a few things. At forty five nineteen Cumberland, the contractor has stated that the new sun pump outfall. Will be located in a right front wall and that the flow from the. Pump outfall will be directed towards the street. At forty eight eleven Cumberland Avenue. I completed a final review and as soon as the H V H C sound check. Has been completed, we will close that building permit. At forty five, forty fifty four oh four Graystone. That building was due to expire at the end of October and the architect says that they don't anticipate. They anticipate. The county will do a final in a couple of weeks, so they will not need an extension on that building permit. And at fifty five sixteen Trent. That permit was due to expire August twentieth, but the contractor says that due to the COVID, he can't, has been unable to get a final from the county. So he hopes that will be done in the next couple of weeks. But as far as he knows, the only thing remaining are a few items on the homeowner's punch list. And just to let the council know that. Montgomery County Department of Transportation came out and inspected the storm drain inlets that run from. Forty five fifteen Cumberland down to past the tennis courts down to the parking lot. They also televised the pipelines. They found that there was no blockage in the in the system and the system was operating efficiently. So it that system is working well. And that the homeowners at fifty seven oh ten, fifty seven oh two Warwick. Have applied for accessory dwelling unit approval at the county and that is pending. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you, Council Member Barr.
Yeah, it's the playhouse that whatever it is, forty. Eight oh eight Cumberland is still in the wrong place. Do we have any way to encourage them to move it? I know there are upset neighbors there.
What was that address again, excuse me?
That that's that's the playhouse at whatever it is, forty eight oh eight Cumberland Avenue. It. Which does not comply with the minimum setbacks. We had reviewed it prior previously. They agreed to move it and they haven't moved it yet. And so what do we do now?
Well, that's an enforcement that because the town attorney, town manager want to address that.
I'll follow up with them this week and I can send you an email. With without.
Yes, and send it to everybody, please. Okay, did you have any other questions, Councilor Barr? Thank you. Council Member Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Kumar.
No questions. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, public hearing motion to consider a tree removal permit application submitted by. Shelton Zuckerman for the removal of seven. Leland Cypress trees on the property located at forty nine eleven Cumberland Avenue to be replaced by eight people. She chase trees to improve privacy screening is approved by the town arborist, Mr. Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Jeffrey. There are nine nine, the photograph you can see at the bottom of the page, there's nine trees there. Two of them are under four inch size, so they don't need a permit. The other seven are ten, sixteen, eight, eight, twelve, ten and eleven. Inches and at breast height. And I think this is just overgrown and they want to remove them and replace them. With a new. Arbor vitality variety and they've already paid the bond and I I agree with removal and also the reforestation plan.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Barr.
No questions.
Council Member Heller.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions. Thank you, Tolbert.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated a desire to speak on this issue?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the tree removal permit application for forty nine eleven Cumberland Avenue. With the reforestation plan. As discussed by the town arborist.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
I see Barr. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. The next item. Public hearing motion to consider a tree removal permit application submitted by Neil. Isn't it Thompson?
Yes, Tom.
Yes, for the removal of trees on the property located at fifty eight sixteen Surrey Street. Two Leland Cypress and one Arborvity Arborvity as recommended by the town arborist due to the trees declining. Hell, Dr. Feather.
Yes, they requested two Leland Cypress, nine and twelve inches. Diameter and one Arborvity eleven. The Arborvity is actually half dead. It's on the driveway. You can see in the photograph. And the two Leland Cypress have kind of overgrown the spot in the corner next to the house and are draping over the roof. And also have very little foliage or foliage at the bottom. They don't have a reforestation plan. The bond is fifteen hundred dollars for three trees. And I've suggested three evergreen or three ornamental trees be planted on the property. The property does have canopy trees in the back and also. Pretty heavy cover of we have a zelkovan a pear in the front on street trees. So I recommend approval.
Okay, does I think we. Mr. Town Attorney, shouldn't we give, does Mr. Thompson wish to comment on the application?
No, no, no comment.
Okay.
We did not submit a reforestation plan, but we're we're happy to follow the town's recommendations.
And thank you for attending. The Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Council Member Heller.
No questions.
Council Member Kumar.
None. Thank you again, Tolbert.
Yes.
Council Member Rovak.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guests? Indicated a desire to speak on this topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the tree removal permit for fifty eight sixteen Surrey Street. With the the note that the the town arborist recommendation should be considered by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
I saw Barr. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider the removal. Of the following eleven trees as listed in your agenda as recommended by the town arborist, Dr. Feather.
Yeah, after the last variance discussion on the tree, I. I I'm guilty. But these all have, these all have reasons. The red bud. On Cumberland is dead. It's three etches. We'll and all of these we're going to replace. The pin oak on at forty five sixteen Dorset has looked the same since I've been working for the town. And so I'd like to take that out and start over. The sugar maple on Essex is seventy five percent dead and hazardous. The Holly other, the Holly on forty seven thirty one is dead. The black locust in Capella Park. Has rot in the trunk. This was pointed out by staff, by Enrique. And is hazardous and the mulberry next to it is leaning heavily and also hazardous. There's also an elm next to the new batting cage. That is. Has about fifty percent canopy is leaning over the. The town hall. The red bud in Capella Park is. Is actually the red buds in Vinton Park. It's on that little walk through in Wisconsin. is, is actually, the red buds in Vinton Park, it's on that little walk through to Wisconsin and it's almost prostate on the ground and it has a crack in it. So that needs to come out and Enrique wants to take that out too. There are silver maple in Capella Parks also by the batting cage and it has hollow underneath. And it's hazardous. The dogwood in Capella Park next to Wisconsin and Dorset is dead. And I just noticed the black locust when I was looking at the dogwood. There used to be three elm trees there. They all died the past three or four years. And now that's kind of standing out alone with just a, like a pom pom on top. So that's kind of, that's a dangerous tree. It can be blown over by wind. Also has decay at the base. And I'm thinking maybe over there where the elms came out, let's try to get sycamores established. Maybe back from the wires a little bit so they don't get pruned. So that's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Council President Serko, do you have any questions?
An unusual question that comes to mind with the, the Ways and Means Committee that Kabir has proposed. When we cut down these trees, might it be possible to cut them into firewood and sell them or make them just available to residents?
Well, is that question to Dr. Feather?
Yes, I just wondered if he had any thoughts on that.
Okay.
You, you, you could. It probably will be a little more time for the contractor. So there'll be a little, there'll be an added expense. And then the other thing is just you don't want to start doing that and then have piles of wood everywhere.
Good point.
So if there's a mechanism to stockpile it or have staff stockpile it or, I mean, you can't really sell it, I don't think, but people might use it. So.
So, it's just, it's just a thought.
Yeah. So I mean, they work pretty efficiently, so it, it kind of puts another thing they have to do in their, in their process.
I, I think a lot of committees could, could take up that interesting idea, Council President Serko.
I mean,
yeah, okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Council member Heller.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Uh, no question. Thank you again, Toby.
Councilor Rovak.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated a desire to speak on this topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the removal of the eleven town trees as described by the town arborist.
Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, motion to introduce ordinance number six twenty-one one and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to require a stormwater drainage plan for new construction projects to add stormwater drainage plan requirements to add to the statement of intents and purposes to add definitions, to require a pre-permit informational meeting and to apply the existing variance procedures to the new, new stormwater drainage plan requirements. I turn this over, I think, to the council president, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Or any, any council member could make the motion, but.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. President.
Let him decide.
Yeah.
Turn it up to him. Or do you want, well, Mr. President, council, do you want the town attorney to do any further elaboration, especially in the interest of time right now?
There's, there's one thing that I do, do want to draw your attention to, so let me do it quickly. We discussed variance procedures and decided that we wanted to include a possibility of allowing variances for stormwater runoff. And that is mentioned in the motion itself. But in the code that you've written, it still has the language that variances do not apply to stormwater ordinances. So I, in approving the motion, I want to delete that language so that it there's no reference to it not applying to, to storm, storm water.
So.
Oh, oh, sorry.
No, no, good. Well, I mean, I kind of messed up on this procedure. Probably we should have had you, because when, when the motion's made to, to introduce it, that could be deleted, right? But also it can be, you know, this is just the baseline, remember, everybody? And it can be amended before it's passed. But anyway, why don't, why don't you, Mr. Town Attorney, answer Councilor Barr's question and then we will go through, then he, his first, we'll start with the president. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you know, going back to the, the discussion from the variance hearing, the town's code is somewhat unusual in describing the variance criteria. Because right now it says an applicant can prove the variance on either of the two following grounds. One, basically that they're not interfering with light and air, etc., their neighbors of enjoyment. Or two, there's a special condition that creates a hardship. So what I've done in this ordinance is restrict a variance from the stormwater requirements to the second of those options. Because it didn't make sense to me that someone would argue entitlement to a stormwater variance because they're not interfering with their neighbors' light and air. Instead, I thought it appropriate for them to have to prove the higher burden, that there's something unusual about the property, creating an inability to comply with the stormwater drainage requirements. So right now, as written, there is a variance option. They just have to go under option B. I'm eliminating option A, but not option B, if that makes sense.
Would, would you just take a look at it? Because I thought that the overall listing excluded stormwater from it and that covered both A and B. And so you need to separate them out, is what I'm saying.
Got you. Okay. Yes. Okay. So maybe I haven't made it clear.
Well, okay, so just as an aside, once it's introduced, you know, that doesn't mean that's going to be the final law. So you, every councilor will have a chance to, to amend it.
Right.
But let me ask.
It, it's a procedural fix, just.
I understand. But let me ask Council President Serko if he had any questions about what the town attorney presented.
No questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. So Councilor Barr, do you have any other questions about the document that's before you?
Uh, no, I don't. I mean, this, this is an interim document from the Stormwater Committee. They are going, we're going to go beyond this, but this is a good start.
Okay, thank you. Council member Heller, did you have any questions?
No, I think this is great, actually.
Okay, thank you. Council member Kumar.
Uh, just clarification that we, this also includes the concurrent review language, right, Ron?
Yes, sir.
To be a hundred percent clear, because I was not in the summary, may I say that? But that's great, great. No more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, no, but I was just gonna mention, because it kind of came up tonight, that I don't know if there's a way that we can look to include that for, you know, kind of like significant additions to the houses or like other structures, because Montgomery County, as you heard, have a loophole in terms of like, if, you know, like this guy behind me on Drummond is putting up a gazebo. And because he's not really altering the existing footprint of his house, he doesn't have to follow the stormwater management. And he doesn't have to, you know, submit that in. And so it's something for us to consider because it came up tonight with that house that's not being changed. Although there are significant aspects of that house that are going to be changed and, you know, we don't really know where that water from the, you know, garage is going to swale around too. And, you know, there could be other impacts from that change. So I don't know if it's a way to kind of incorporate that language that if it's, you know, a, an addition or something.
Okay, well, I think that's a very good point. And I think that probably what I would suggest is that you introduce this current draft tonight. And then I would suggest that at the work session on the twenty-first, you discuss any possible amendments you would like to add and then also decide when you're going to put it on the, you know, when do you want to vote on it? Because you don't have to, if you introduce it tonight, you don't have to vote on it in October. You can vote on it when you think, when, when you're ready to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, is anyone prepared to introduce this order, this, this legislation?
Yeah, I, I will propose that we introduce ordinance number six dash twenty-one one. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to require a stormwater drainage plan for new construction projects, to add stormwater drainage plan requirements, to add to the statement of intents and purposes, to add definitions, require pre-permit informational meeting here, that Kabir, and to apply the existing variance procedures to the new stormwater drainage plan requirements.
Okay, is there, okay, I see. Councilor Kumar seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none?
Wait, wait, I want to say, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I wanted to quickly respond to what I was waiting for this moment to respond to what Shannon said, you know, Shannon, you know, we, as Robin mentioned as well, this is just the first step to, to regulate stormwater, stormwater. It's not the final step. So we've, we've opened, it's, you know, we've opened it up on new constru-, uh, construction. We could go further. And there are other questions as well, as you know, from our discussion session. So you know, just keep that in mind as we move forward in this.
I think the president wanted to say something.
Right, but, but actually Kabir, that's, that's essentially what I wanted to emphasize for folks is that this is an interim or initial step recommended by the town stormwater study committee. They will have recommendations for a final step. I don't know, six, nine months down the road. And I think the sooner we get something like this in place, the sooner we'll have more protection for the town and residents. And also the sooner we can start to get some feedback and lessons learned on how this works and we might, we might identify some issues that need to be tweaked in, in the final version.
Well, one of, one of the things that the council always decides when a, an amendment to the code is introduced is who is going to write the article for the town journal? And you don't have to decide tonight.
Yes. We'll talk about that at the, um, at the work session.
Except the work session is after the deadline for the journal.
Oh, good point. So my, thank you. So let's talk about right now. What my preference would be for the, the towns, the, the council liaison to the stormwater study committee.
That would be me, so I'll write it. Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is that going to be for this month, for, for, for the next journal?
It'll be just the, it'll just be the discussion of the, the legislation.
Right, Steve, then do you want me to write something for the following month?
No, no, no. So I'm still looking for you to provide sort of a a, a general synopsis on council activities.
Okay.
Areas of interest, etc. And Robin will provide a focused article on this. I propose two ordinance.
Okay, and to that end, I was going to write everybody a note, but I'm going to save it. Please send me anything that you'd like me to include into this little.
Okay, let's, let's.
Okay.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, okay, so that, so that, that legislation has been introduced. And our final agenda item is the manager's report, Mr. Town Manager.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I'll just quickly kind of hit the, hit the big topics here and I'm happy to follow up individually with any council members afterwards, if you have questions about any of this or something else. But one big thing is that we did get our first tranche of the, the rescue plan funds in the month of August. And so we'll get the second one in the next twelve months. I am sitting in on a webinar that MML is co-hosting next week that will give some guidance and help and sort of first steps in terms of what, what to do next with, now that we have this money. And I know we had some conversations with the budget committee folks and crunching those numbers and ways that we can use, use the money to to make up for some, some budget shortfalls that we've seen. But as we've talked about, there, there's probably going to be other opportunities and other projects that we can use the money for. I, so, uh, speaking of storm, stormwater and stormwater management and drainage, LIDC is still planning to come and present to the council at the September work session. So Barry sent them an invitation. I had a, a nice update with them last week. Exciting stuff that they're putting together. And one of the really neat things that they were looking at is data that showed maps of Somerset from the nineteen forties onwards that showed the change in topography and water flow in town. And one of the interesting things that Neil pointed out to me was that there was a stream that actually ran through kind of the heart of Somerset back in the forties, fifties, and then just disappears. And so ostensibly that is buried beneath and is sort of an underground water source that lines up very neatly with folks that responded that they were having flooding and water issues to the highest degree that was allowable in the, the committee's survey that they put out. So I think some of this data yeah, especially over time, I think will be really informative in terms of where we have problem areas and to help us think about what residents can do and what the town can perhaps do to help mitigate some of these, these things. Another issue that is kind of a hot, hot topic is the Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty. So Mayor Slavin has, has reached out and, and gotten some, some really good panelists to sit in on a, a town forum. And we've, we've penciled in Monday, September twenty-seventh for the forum. We've got somebody from the planning board to give just kind of a primer on the whole plan. Somebody to, to represent the down county coalitions, concerns and questions. Somebody who, who's an advocate for expanding housing and somebody who is who kind of has the opposite viewpoint in terms of affordable housing.
Well, no, 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 not, no, no. She, she has an alternative to the document that would also achieve affordable housing.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not articulating it well.
Yeah, anyway, you, you're fine. I just, I just told him about this five minutes ago, so he did a good job of reporting on it. Um, but is everybody, is everybody okay for the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock? And if you can't be there, you can get, it'll be recorded and there will be, you'll, you can ask questions in advance and it's going to be on Zoom. It should only be an act, it might be, it could be ninety minutes, depending on how many questions there are.
A couple of other events to maybe mark in your calendars. One is on the nineteenth, we have the town hall reopening and dedication of the, the meeting space to former council members Peel and Zoig Hauser. We're going to have a couple of members of our state delegation there. I think Councilmember Freedson will also be in attendance, possibly Attorney General Frosch to say some words about service of community volunteerism and and also women in local politics too. And then the other is, it sort of snuck up on us, but the MML conference, MML has a smaller fall conference and that's happening in Eloquent City October tenth through twelfth. So I'm happy to, to send you information on that and we can sign up any council members that are interested in, in attending that. Last couple of things. One is that I had a, a really great meeting with Last couple of things, one is that I had a, a, a really great meeting with uh, Kristin Connor, who's the uh, Chair of the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. Um, and she and her committee members, I think, are going, are um, are gonna work to put together a new committee charter for the council to consider and sort of reimagine how that committee can be more active and um, have a, a, a stronger um, purpose moving forward. Um, and then uh, second to last thing is, I wanted to give a quick update on records retention, I think um, it's looking like maybe the September work session is going to be busy, but perhaps the October work session might be a good time for you all to get an update on that, I think by that time we'll, we'll pretty much have um, wrapped everything, so you can see um, all the good and important work that, that Donna's, that Donna's done for the town. And then the, the last thing, um, I just wanted to highlight is something we talked about before, but the pool committee has already done some work in looking into the feasibility of keeping the pool open year round and also renting out the Somerset Pool for extended uh, extended seasons and perhaps into the winter and, and year round. Um, I shared with you all some information that, that Ron had looked into, um, that perhaps complicates the issue, perhaps not, but um, but i- is some good background information, I think, as the council considers this and, and some other proposals from, from the pool committee. I know this topic has been earmarked for the September work session. Um, but one of the things that we had talked about was if um, if you all could get back to me on some of the, the things that you wanted me to be able to bring to that meeting to make sure that that was a fruitful and productive meeting. I do, I do note that Councilmember Kumar did send a, a couple of, I think, four, four or five different things like I, that, the general cost of what it would be to, to, to operate the pool year round. Um, some ways that we might be able to offset those costs, including uh, renting it out to other um, facilities or other swim, swim teams, other uh, organizations. And then um, any potential investments that the town might need to make in order to mitigate risks of renting it out to places, but also to operate it outside of what has been our traditional pool season. Um, so if you all think about that and let that simmer for the next few, few days or something, um, maybe if by next, next week you could get it to me to give me a week or so to, to try to research some of that and, and bring it to, back to you.
Okay, hold on, hold on, you'll get a chance, um, before we go around to take questions, um, we did promise, the, the council president and I decided that we would have uh, Ron explain why we don't have the authority to currently have the authority to rent out the pool. So that, so that when we went around with uh, the, the questions people could ask him about it, so can you just uh, very briefly review that memo? That, that's why we didn't, that's why the council president and I did not put this on the agenda, because we do not have the authority to rent out the pool to anybody, and I will let him uh, elaborate. And then I'll take questions.
So there, there was a case in nineteen seventy four when the town was first establishing the pool and announced it would be for residents only. There was a non-resident of the town who challenged that proposal and argued that if the town's using public funds to create the pool, it ought to be a public pool open to non-residents as well. And that litigation did not succeed. The court and it went all the way up to Maryland's highest court, Maryland Court of Appeals, found that the town did have the ability to restrict membership to residents. But then there's a statement in there, although dicta does complicate things as, as Matt noted. So the court stated, in fact, based on the town charter, the town is only allowed to spend money for the benefit of residents, meaning the town cannot even operate a public pool open to the public at large if it wanted to. There is a state law that provides when the town does its annual levy, you know, the town is supposed to be spending the residents' tax dollars on the residents. And so that same theme carries forward in the town charter. And the court focused on that statement in the town charter. Now, it's, it's dicta. The court didn't have to make that finding to resolve the case. And so, you know, generally in Maryland, when a judge mentions something in an opinion that wasn't really necessary for the actual issue and controversy, it's known as dicta and it may not actually be binding on future cases, because the court didn't fully discuss and perhaps didn't intend to make that decision binding on future cases. But, you know, it's, it's sure persuasive and, you know, if a court made that finding, albeit dicta, it certainly could be made again if the issue was directly presented for review by a court.
And, and thank you for that nice summary and remember everyone, we took our oath of office as public servants, it, you know, it's really our duty to limit any kind of liability and we should not be making decisions that could uh, you know, uh, violate that oath that we took and, and get us um, into, into legal trouble, so we have to be very careful when we um, I, I know, I think it's great that people are thinking outside the box and committees and all that, but we have to be very careful when we make decisions that could result in uh, exposure. So with that, Council President Circa, do you have any questions of Matt or the town attorney?
No questions, thank you for that update and thank you for the manager's report and thank you for the concise description of legal issues regarding renting the pool.
And now Councilmember Barr.
Yeah, I also reacted to something that, that our attorney said, um, I, from reading the pool committee minutes, I understand that a lawyer on the pool committee is also looking at that nineteen seventy four case. And probably we're gonna hear something from the pool committee on that, so we'll wait to hear what they're going to say. But, but I was trying, the point I was gonna try to make earlier was that, because you and I had um, back when, when honeybees were the issue. Uh, and the issue wa- was how much insurance did we have on the pool for incidents there? And it turned out to be rather low, a million or two, and, and the point is that if we do go to rentals, we're gonna have to increase our insurance, because it is the liability issue.
Well, there, there are many, many issues, I mean, that is a public pool that is intended for the residents, it's not intended to, to make money for the town, that's, it's a public.
No, under, understood, understood, and, and I, I agree with that, as I said, I'm just trying to bring up another issue that will complicate.
I understand, it's a ve- it's, you know, I, like everything else is very complicated. Did you have any other uh, questions or comments for?
No.
Thank you.
I, I would just say, I would just say really quickly that um, to your first point, Rob, and I, I have also highlighted that the, the pool committee has sort of a, a resident lawyer, and so one of the questions that I'd like the council to consider is to what extent do you want to, or what extent or, or at all do you want to approve of that coordinating with the town attorney?
Not, there's none, because there are lawyers on every committee and, and that's, you know, he, he does not have stand, he, he, that, that's not, that's beyond, you know, this is your job, not the committee's to do. You know, I mean, thanks for the offer, but, okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller.
When it came to, when it came to Dennis Horn, you know, uh, checking into this, you know, it was just a matter of him reading the case to understand it
He is every right to.
And to then explain it to people on the committee. Nobody said he should call Ron and go into a full-fledged, you know, thing on this.
Debate.
Well, he did call Ron, so.
I know he did, and um, you know, I, I think it got a little out of hand. I think this whole thing is out of hand, to be quite honest. And I guess it should be, we'll save it for the work session, but I have my opinions about this, okay?
I'm glad you're the liaison to the pool committee.
And I told him I couldn't talk to him unless it was approved by the town.
Yeah, and I know they wanted, they wanted you to like, open your books to Matt, to, to Walt Whalen, and I'm like, what? You can't just do these things.
We appreciate, we, we appreciate the enthusiasm of the committees and.
Right, it's very, it's very.
Okay, Councilmember Kumar, any questions?
Yeah, Matt, thanks for the, for the report and thanks Ron for very useful um, summary there. Matt, on the streetlights, you know, we had a sort of a rough ban of action, going back a couple of reports from you. Just wondering where things stand on that front, were you able to um, get, uh, I think Wayne, is it right, Wayne? Uh, and look at the other streetlights, will be able to investigate if others are broken?
Yes, he, he had sent me another list of streetlights in town that we then forwarded along to Pepco, um.
Great.
Thanks for the reminder, though, I, I'll go back and double check and make sure that we had hit all the streets and make sure that we keep, keep up with it and make this thing.
Thank you. The other question I have is on the website development, you know, would, will we see some wireframes? Or something in a working session, next, next one or the one after? Maybe when you're back, I don't know how you're thinking about that.
Yeah, we should have something soon, um, we have, the, the communications committee has a um, a survey actually that was developed to, by, by the website develop, the website design firm. Um, and so I think that they wanted to look over that and make sure that they didn't have any changes and need discuss who, whether they wanted to do a targeted survey or, or townwide, so.
Um, okay, I also want to pledge that I, I haven't, I need to get more involved with this and I, I want to find a way to formally engage the five of you in, having input into the um, into this process. So I, I, I will hopefully get back to you on this by the work session. But, but, but you are the five that are really the most important stakeholders in this, so. So, and, and I haven't paid as much attention to it as I would have liked. So I'm glad you brought it up. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, yes, procurement, procurement code, next working session? Is that our thinking or the, after your back?
I think probably after that, um, the, the um, Equity Inclusion Committee has been focused on coordinating the um, the food trucks and the chair is out of the country, so they haven't had an opportunity to do a, a, a meeting and discuss any.
She was trying to schedule a meeting for September fourteenth, so it's coming up soon.
Okay, for the procurement call?
Yeah, it's just the next meeting of.
But they're weighing in on it.
On, on that draft that you've had, Chuck?
Yeah, I think one, uh, my, my notes were that we wanted feedback from the Equity Inclusion Committee on the procurement policy um, to formalize to get formal recommendations from them on any um, any, anything that they thought ought to be included.
Okay, okay, I, I, I remember that you were going to do another draft, that's all.
Yes, 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 so that, that, that is on my, uh, yes, on my, on my project list.
And last question, plans for when you are out, I noticed you sent something saying I, I'm still gonna be working during my wedding, that's what, that's what I, or that I'm available this week or. I sincerely hope that's not the case.
Linda and I will be covering for him.
Yeah, okay, all right, because I read somewhere, you were like, I'm still available, I'm like.
No, 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 uh, no, all I, the only thing I was saying was that I am, I am going to attend the October council meeting and that's sort of my last day probably before then I have to shift focus to the wedding.
And then we will be, we will be, we will be giving him the opportunity to celebrate. Okay, is that your last, is that your last?
My last, thank you, thanks again, man.
And Councilor Roback, the last word or question?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to like stall, but um, I know that one of the things for the town attorney was that um, there was discussion about that whole pool renting out thing that we had supposedly done that with Camp Somerset, so um, I don't know, I don't care like what the ins and the outs are, but I know that just to play devil's advocate, that's what um, people have been saying.
Well, that's a good, that, that's a good question. And I, I, it might have been contrary to what we're allowed to do.
Except, yeah, wasn't it always that Camp Somerset is filled with Somerset kids?
I, I, you know, I don't think we need to go, I, this is very complicated, as you can tell. But it's possible, i- it's, it's possi- but it, but that wasn't related to the, what you can tell people is Camp Somerset, oh, I guess they used the pool, didn't they? But wasn't it only, wasn't it only Somerset residents that used that pool? No, okay, that's a good question.
For free and the kids would pay for it.
I would suspect that that might have been a violation.
They have not done it since pre, I mean, since COVID. So like this past summer, when it was at the town hall or at the park, um, they did not use the pool.
It, it's possible, it's possible that that was a violation and.
My only caution on this would be, and I mentioned this via email quickly, quickly, I know I'm going out of turn, but I want to make this point, because a number of things have been said, is that unless it's financially sensible to do this, the rest of the issues are moot, in my opinion. So if we can come with a clear financial picture, then we can look at the rest of the issues. And right now, I have serious questions about that. And so I, you know, whoever is taking on the baton on this front, I think that's an important first gate for us to clear before we get into the other issues I've been tabled.
The baton is held by the five of you.
Okay, well then, let's, let's do that, the next work session.
And the council president will approve this. It'll be a prize, okay, Councilor Roback, is that your last question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so before we adjourn, I just want to say that I think the five of you did a fantastic job with those hearings. And I think again, you learned quite a bit in your orientation and it showed tonight, and I think that it was a very professional hearing, very well done, and I, and I think that, that the correct outcomes were achieved. And all the, and all the parties had the opportunities to, to weigh in and there was, was, you know, there was, there was some disrespectful language, but none of it came from the five of you. So, so I thought it was great, and I think you should be proud of yourselves.
The mayor did a great job of, of managing the, the comments and the, the length of the comments.
But the one other thing, one of the things that we definitely have to do is disable, you know, the comment in the Zoom has to be disabled during a hearing, because that's, and then, and then the body language with the, with the uh, with the architect, that's, you know, once the hearing's over, then it's between the five of you like, like the Supreme Court. And Steve came to the rescue too.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, don't apologize, nobody should apologize.
It, it was, it was great, long evening, uh, very long evening. Certainly aim for shorter meetings, but um, thank you all for hanging in there.
Yes.
And um, I move that we adjourn.
Okay, goodbye, see you all in nineteen.
Surprise.
Bye bye.
Good night, everyone.